Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 16th, 2023 Indian River County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. We will start off with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces, followed by an invocation by the Pastor Jimmy Hill with the salt of the earth ministry, then a pledge of allegiance led by our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Susan Adams. I would ask everybody to please rise.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come before you this morning, God, giving your thanks and giving your praise for all the wonderful things you have done. We ask God for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding this morning. Father God, as you bless these commissioners, Father God, as they go before you in business, we ask for God that the peace of God that surpasses all understanding should guard their hearts and their minds in Christ Jesus. And we ask God that you bless not only them, but bless their families as they are serving our community. Bless their families, bless their children, bless their children's children. We ask God that you just continue to bless Vero Beach in its entirety and all that we're trying to accomplish for the glory and the honor of you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please pardon me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the land of America, in two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternally blessed.
Thank you, Pastor Hill. Item four, Commissioners additions, deletions to the agenda emergency items. I would like to move 9A to follow 5B. That way, we can get the clerk and his crew back to work. So, that's the only recommendation I have, but did I hear any others?
Move to approve as amended.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss to approve his, I'm sorry, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, passes five zero. All right, next, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. And I will start out with this proclamation. It's a proclamation honoring Cynthia M. Corrente on her retirement from Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, Department of Utility Services, General and Engineering Division. Cindy and Mr. Leskey and anybody else. We see Homan Chu back there and the whole crew. All right. Well, Cindy, welcome. And I'm going to read the proclamation and then we're going to talk about you.
Okay, sounds like a deal.
All right, let's do this. All right, this is a proclamation honoring Cynthia M. Corrente on her retirement from the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, Department of Utility Services, General and Engineering Division. Whereas Cynthia M. Cindy Corrente will retire from Indian River County Department of Utility Services effective June 30th, 2023. And whereas Cindy began her career as a civil servant, working with the school district of Indian River County, where she worked for 14-plus years and retired in 2003. Whereas, following her retirement from the school district, Cindy began working with Indian River County as a staff accountant within the Finance Department of the Clerk of the Court's Office from 2003 to 2004. Whereas Cindy then transferred to the Indian River County Department of Utility Services on June 2nd, 2004, where she has worn multiple hats over her illustrious 19-year career. She started out as the Controller in the General and Engineering Division. From there, she became the Assistant Director of Utility Services on March 10th, 2006, and then Utilities Finance Manager on September 4th, 2012, where she has continued until her retirement. Whereas Cindy was able to easily collaborate with engineers, operations staff, and interested external parties to bring projects such as Spoonbill Marsh and Osprey Acres online to the betterment of the Indian River Lagoon. Whereas Cindy was always willing to go the extra mile to get the job done and assist the Department of Utility Services in any way possible, including working through the night to assist crews with water main breaks, working with citizens when they were struggling to pay their water bills, and even serving as the interim Utilities Director for a stint. Whereas Cindy was instrumental in ensuring the financial strength of Department of Utility Services by overseeing a variety of long overdue studies, evaluating and adjusting ordinances when necessary, and steadfastly collecting past due debts owed to the department. Whereas Cindy has served this county and public with distinction and selflessness during her 19 years of service. She was dedicated and her work was greatly appreciated by her employer, the citizens, and her coworkers alike. And now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board applauds Cindy Corrente's efforts on behalf of the county and the Board, which is to express their appreciation for the dedicated service she has given to Indian River County for the last 19 years. Be it therefore proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners and staff extend heartfelt wishes for success in her future endeavors adopted this 16th day of May, 2023, and proudly signed by myself. It says 19 years, but between the school board and everything else, you've spent a lot of years serving Indian River County. And that's something to certainly be proud of, and I assure you, you have made a difference. So with that, Mr. Leskey.
Sure, I'll say a few things, then we'll turn it over to Cindy. You know, Cindy, as you mentioned, she's served the county for well over 30 years in a variety of different roles and responsibilities, and, you know, more recently with the utility. And, you know, we're going to be sad to see her go. You know, I've started here about a year ago, and Cindy kind of brought me on and kind of showed me the ropes, and I appreciate all that she's done. She really, she leads with tenacity. She is, she is always looking out for the best interest of this utility. You can ask the guys behind me how many times they've heard no come out of Cindy. It's probably more than they care to say. But, you know, in the end, you know, it's also a collaboration and working together to, for the betterment of this utility. It may be no initially, but they always seem to find ways to find the money, figure out how to make things work, and keep our utility and the water flowing. So I really greatly appreciate everything that Cindy has done for this utility over her, over her career. So, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. And really, that's what I want to say here this morning to everyone. You can see I have a good team. A lot of them showed up here this morning as busy as they are, and I really appreciate every one of them and have worked and enjoyed working with them over the past almost 19 years. So, I did want to come here publicly this morning to the podium one last time during my career, and I don't have to bore anybody with any utility matters or PowerPoint presentations or anything. But I'm here to say thank you. And I want to thank all of the folks that I've worked with over the past 19 years. But I want to, and there's one, only one person, because I don't want to leave anybody out, but there is one person that I am going to mention by name, because it wasn't, if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't have had the exciting career that I had in utilities. And that's former Utility Director Eric Olson, because he's the one that had the confidence in me to promote me to the Assistant Director position. And I can tell you that that opened up so many doors for me and provided me with almost 17 years of the 19 here at the utility that led to such an exciting and fulfilling career. I've had the pleasure of working here for 19 years, and I want to thank all of the staff, both retired and those that are still here carrying on for all, for those that, you know, for me that I'm leaving behind all of you. But these folks work 365, 24/7 to provide water and sewer services to our community. And our customers might take it for granted when they turn on the tap and they get potable drinking water and clean water, and take it for granted when they do the flush and everything disappears. But it's these folks behind the scenes, and I can tell you, I've witnessed firsthand how hard they have to work to help make that happen. There's a lot that goes into providing these services. And then, while most of us are in our community are at home in the evenings, weekends, holidays, enjoying time with our families, our staff is busy working behind the scenes, because like I said, we're 365, 24/7. There are no holidays in utilities. There are no evening hours wherever somebody takes a break. Somebody's always working 24/7. The same is true when a lot of us are hunkered down with our families waiting for a tropical storm or hurricane to go by. Our folks are working. They're on standby. They're manning the plants. They're making sure nothing goes down. And the minute those winds come down to reasonable, where we can get back on the road, they're out there. They're out there providing service. And it's those folks I want to say thank you to today. I've witnessed all the long hours that you worked tending main breaks during the night, manning the plants. You know, it's always Murphy's Law. We get a call in the middle of the night or on a holiday, and it happens every time. But it takes an entire team. It takes a team of customer service, staff, administrative support staff, engineers, and their support staff, service workers, crew leaders, foremen, plant operators, and managers to keep the department running smoothly. And it's all of those folks that I've had the pleasure of working with over the last 19 years. Every one of them has made a difference in our community. Every one of you provided me with pleasure and fulfillment for the past 19 years that I spent working here at Indian River County Department of Utility Services. And I just want to thank all of you one last time for contributing to making those 19 years so fulfilling and rewarding here. I appreciate every one of you, and I'll definitely be missing some of you. All of you. Some of you, all of you that are here. I shouldn't have said it that way. There's some, unfortunately, some of our folks didn't get to enjoy a long-term, long time in retirement. We had sadly a few of our folks pass away shortly after retirement, and we miss those folks every day, too. But every one of them contributes to this team. So, thank you all.
Anybody else? Homan Chu, anybody else?
Good morning. Congratulations, Cindy. Yeah, 19 years. That's a long time. And, you know, I can tell you, she's been a mentor to me. And like Sean said, you know, there's a lot of no's that I've gotten over in my careers. But, but at the same time, it's always been a collaboration and, and somebody that I look up to and I will dearly miss. So, congrats.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Cindy. Lisa, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
And I've already expressed this to Cindy. I wanted to thank her. She has been a driving force into where I am today. And she has taught me to be a better manager, and she's taught me how to say no. So, but I do want to thank her. We've worked really, really well together, I think, and we've done some great things together. So I just want to say my appreciation for everything that you've done.
You're welcome. And you're right. This entire team accomplished a lot together.
Yeah, we all did. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleischer.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Cindy, you know, we've heard some no's here about-
I don't know what they're talking about.
I don't know what they're talking about. Maybe the staff, and this is the largest collection of staff that has appeared as somebody is leaving the organization. I want to say you're well complimented. Look at the staff that's here. I don't know how Utilities is open right now. I guess folks phone in and we'll be back with you in a few moments. But, you know, we hear about the no, the no, the no. Maybe that's the staff, but I have always witnessed something else. And I've worked with you probably with most of your 19 years. And I have heard you say, yes, we can do it, how we can do it, because you knew at the end of the day, when, when people, especially when we got those disparuous calls, they were angry, anxious. Cindy, thank you for your demeanor, your professionalism, and your willingness to get it to a yes somehow, even if it required a payment plan, even if it required an adjustment of service. You got it to a yes so many times. And I appreciate it, because you've made all of our jobs far easier. I know that it would be nice if, if people just called up Utilities and said, this is my problem, this is the solution, right? Well, it doesn't always work that way, and people call us. And you and Lisa have always been there to make sure we got it to a yes for the citizens, the people who count and who are, we're providing a service to. I just, I can't thank you enough. You will be sorely missed. Is, are you leaving your contact number with the office in case we get to that, that red alert again?
I've told her she's not really leaving, so.
Well, make sure her access badge is reinstated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And it's been a pleasure to serve our community. That's why we're here as public servants, and it's been an honor to do that for the last, really, 34 years for my career.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lord.
Great. Just to reiterate, Cindy, thank you so much for your 19 years. Congratulations, and best of luck in your retirement.
Madam Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Cindy, enjoy retirement. You have definitely earned it. I've appreciated working with you and all, all the fun projects we've had up in North County. You've been fantastic. So, enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, I met you with a past due billing dispute. I rate customer, not the best way to meet you. But I have to say, I was so impressed at that meeting, because you explained everything very clearly to the, to the customer, and you reached an agreement with the customer that was acceptable and just for both sides. And that's, what a wonderful talent that is. And thank you so much for bringing that to bear.
Counselor.
Thank you.
Cindy, I have to say, it's been such a pleasure getting to work with you for the 10 years that we overlapped. You will certainly be missed. It, I say this all the time, you know, when, when we have great staff and we have great people who work for this organization, it just makes my job so much easier, knowing that folks like you are there and doing the stuff that you need to be done. But you always circled back with me, and we, you know, we worked through issues. And it's just, it was really great to work with you for all those years. In fact, I think your staff's going to miss you so much. When I saw Homan Chu holding the flowers at the beginning, I thought you had given them to him, because that was sort of your sort of consolation to him or apology that you were leaving. But now I see you're holding them, so maybe it was the opposite. I just got confused. But no, Cindy, it was, it was great working with you, and you will be missed.
Thank you very much. Same, same to you.
Mr. Katanich.
Cindy, I want to thank you and congratulate you on your 34-plus, or 33-plus-year public service career. Certainly appreciate everything you've done for the community. I want to wish you all the best, best in retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, thanks again. And I can tell you, y'all see all those boys sitting behind her. When Cindy spoke, they listened. No doubt about that. Cindy, thank you so much.
Come down here. Come down here. Everybody come up and get your picture. We do your picture. Come down here. So.
This one.
She's alive, just.
Oh, there she is, right there in the theater.
I don't know where it's going. It was in the cyber world.
That will protect it. It does everything out.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, moving on. We'll go to 5B in conjunction with item 9A. This will be a presentation by Indian River County Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller Jeffrey R. Smith, announcement of a new service, Access to Justice Self-Health. Mr. Clerk, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how we follow that, but I'm, I'm excited to be here today for what I'm about to present. Kim, do you have the PowerPoint up? I'm here today to announce a great partnership, something that I've wanted to get in the clerk's office for a long time. It's called Access to Justice Self-Health Center here in Indian River County. Next slide, please. What this center will do, and you see some pictures there of where we're going to have it, right inside, on the first floor after you enter security. On the left, Court Admin has graciously given us some space that they were using that we can use for this center. And the purpose of the Self-Health Center is to assist all represented litigants who are in need of forms, review assistance, and for court-approved forms, and also just general information about the court process, how things go, the practice, and whatnot. The center will be able to help with family law, all areas of family law, small claims, and residential landlord/tenant disputes, affordable legal services. What we have worked out with the local bar association is pro bono work from an attorney that can either meet with somebody or do it via Zoom, and they will charge a dollar a minute up to an hour, and that money will go back to the program to help support the program. And they will be able to get legal questions answered, get some idea of what they need to do. And I'll go through some other benefits in a minute. And also, this center will have a kiosk both here and at the United Against Poverty Center, and they will be able to access the do-it-yourself forms and e-file them if they so do choose. And this is going to speed line, streamline the process so, so much better. Next slide. Backwards. There you go. In civil law, what they can't help with, mostly this is county civil and small claims issues. They cannot, we will not be able to help with mortgage foreclosure, criminal or traffic issues, appeals, quick claim deeds, power of attorney, and commercial evictions. Those will have to have a private attorney. And our Self-Health Center will address the other issues that come along. The next slide will tell you what they are. In family law, we can do divorce, child support, child custody, paternity, name change, stepparent adoption, and alimony. But they won't be able to do domestication of foreign judgments, qualified domestic relations orders. Juvenile dependency cases are all going to be not available here, and adoption. So the benefits to this is access to the justice system for the self-represented litigants. We've seen a big increase in self-represented litigants. Obviously, one is because they can't afford an attorney, but also because a lot of people like to do it themselves. What we found is, is that when they fill these forms out, they don't know what they're doing. They don't know the process. And it slows down the system, because once the judge gets the form and it's incorrect, she has to, he or she has to reject it and has to go all over again. So it just slows down the whole process. So this center will streamline the submission of those forms completed to this, so that the smooth, smooth flow of the forms and the case can go through the system more easily. It will provide access to attorney consultations for those that can't afford it under, under-resourced. Provided for community involvement, I'll speak to that in a minute. And again, as I said, reduce costs and streamline cases and reduce, reduction of case backlogs. We've got a serious backlog, obviously, due to the pandemic. And, and then when these forms are not filed correctly, then that creates a bigger backlog, because those cases have to be, those forms have to be resubmitted, and it just extends the time. The partners, I'm so excited to introduce the visionaries, the friends and partners that helped make this program possible without any of your tax dollars. And first of all, I want to give kudos to the United Way. You know, my special relationship with United Way has been there for a long time. And the inspiration came, even though I've had this idea, my colleagues around the state have similar programs. They're all being done through taxpayer dollars. This one is, is peculiar because, and also unique, because it's being funded by the community. And United Way had that inspiration to get funders together to help provide this service. Meredith Egan and Lisa Cale, right here, are the founders of that, the, the idea people and the go-getters here on this issue. The Johns Island Community Service League, I've got Ellen Kendall, who is the president, right there. Michelle Julian, who is the co-chair of the Johns Island Service Community League Grant Committee, and Hope Woodhouse, who is the past president of the Community Service League. With the Johns Island Foundation, they, by the way, the first two, United Way and the Johns Island Service, Community Service League, will be paying for the operations of the center, the salary for the person that I've hired to do this. All the operating needs will be funded by those two entities. The Johns Island Foundation purchased all the equipment, and I got to give them a big thanks as well. Teresa Kilman and Francie Cram from the foundation are there. And the next is the United Against Poverty Center. It's right down the road from us here. We'll have my director for this will be there two days a week, and she'll be at the courthouse three days a week. And Matt Tanner and Carly Lubah from up is here. There they are. Thank you. And then, I got to give kudos to the Judicial Circuit, leading with Patty Harris, the Trial Court Administrator for the 19th Circuit, and her assistant, Don Bolding, are here. Judge Schwab, he's the chief judge of the circuit. They provided the room. They graciously gave up their room that they were using for court recording, and they moved that upstairs, and they gave us this room right on the first floor where self-represented litigants transact their business, so it makes it convenient for them. And also Judge Cynthia Cox, who's here today, I think she's stayed. I don't know if she had to go back to court. There she is. She was a leading instigator in this program as well, because she gets a lot of the family court forms that are not filled out correctly, and she- and she has to reject them, and then the whole process starts all over again. As well as Judge Robin Stone, who's in court today, and Judge Nicole Mens, I think, is in court as well. They were the leaders from the court side, the judicial side. So you can see where all these partners came together. And then, obviously, facilities management, your facilities management led by Rich Spurka, they were able to speedline and get the room. We had to re-carpet the room, we had to repaint the room, and get some computer wiring done for both there and the other place where the, in the conference room, where the attorneys will meet with the, with the stuff, with the defendants or respondents or plaintiffs. And then the clerk of the court and comptroller, my chief deputy, Ryan Butler, who met with these people and coordinated them and heard of them, and I give him kudos for leading this project and getting it done to this point. And I want to introduce to you formerly the director of this program, Nancy Luna. She's right there. She used to work for me, and she went to Court Admin, and now I've lured her back. And she's going to be a very, very big asset to this organization. The big thing here is these partners have seen the vision, the need is there. There's a lot of need for people to have assistance through the justice system that can't afford it. And we will be able to serve them and get them through the process. And this is a great accomplishment. It's a big thing for Indian River County. United Way has led this effort for years, and notice, and they know what the need is. And Ryan and I both have documented the need for help for these people. And I'm so thankful for the partners and the visions that they have. And so I just want everybody to give them a round of applause. Thank you for the. So that's the program. I look forward to you all coming over and seeing what transpires. We're formerly, we still have to get some furniture in the room and the computers hooked up. But Nancy is working out of family for the time being, and she's leading the charge along with Meredith and Lisa Cale to get all that taken care of and coordinating all the logistics to get everything in, in time. We're hoping for a soft opening in June, by June 1st, but that depends on how things go. But I really do appreciate everybody's support and participation in this. The funders know that the need is there, and they wanted to keep the money here. And so that's why I'm leading the charge. I've got Nancy, who's an employee of the clerk's office. And so I wanted to keep the money here to benefit Indian River County residents because the money's coming from the funders in Indian River County, and that's only proper. So that leads me into my next request, is that I know that the county is required by law to fund legal aid programs in the, in the area. Herefore, you've been giving money to Florida Rural Legal. I'm here to petition you all to allow Kristin, as the budget director, Kristin Daniels, to make the decision as to whether she can allocate some money to this program because it's going to stay here, and we will have a presence here. Florida Rural Legal does not have an office here in Indian River, and it makes it hard for self-litigated litigants, self-represented litigants, to deal with somebody that's not local. And so we're asking for the, your authority to give to Kristin to make that decision come budget time and allocate all or some of the funds that you normally are required to give to this program. But I do want to make it important and emphasize that the funders saw this vision, and they stepped up to the plate. And we need to thank Johns Island Community Service League, the United Way, Johns Island Foundation, for providing the funds to get this program off the ground. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And Ryan, I know you all know that I'm resigning, I'm retiring pretty soon. And Ryan will take this program and take it to the next level. So I really appreciate them stepping up to the plate and funding this program to, to what it needs to be. So that's my request, is that you allow Kristin to make the decision in the budgeting process to allocate some or all the funds to this program.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Missus, under item 99A, Jeffrey R. Smith, Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, Legal Aid Program Funding for the Access to the Justice Self-Health Center. With that, he would, see if I got this right, you want to, because we need to take action on this item. So with that, you also want to have us ask the budget director to see what she can do with regards.
Before you get to that, though, I'd like to ask if any of the partners that are a part of this program want to come up and say a few words. Does anybody, no, okay. Nobody wants to say anything. Now we can go to that agenda item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so that's the way I interpret it. Dylan, would that seem, sound correct to you?
Yeah, so Kristin and I were talking about this as this item was coming forward, and our viewpoint was it wasn't really the budget director's role to pick and choose what program got the money from the legal services money that needs to be spent on those programs. I felt from a legal perspective, it's certainly qualified under the statute. And so we were just looking for guidance from the board. So what I envision is a motion, kind of like what Jeff said, which was simply authorize, as the budget moves forward with preparing the budget, that those funds, or some of those funds, go to this program. And so defer to the board as to how you would like to take that up.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Lor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. Commissioner Fleischer, was the intent to move some of the funds or all of the funds to this program? Do you have a preference, just to give clarity to budget?
Obviously, the, the community and many entities have stepped up to the plate, and we need to incorporate it into a budget line item to ensure that the program is as funded as needed. And perhaps we need to bring it back?
So the proposal, well, the proposal essentially is, is when Kristin prepares the line items, normally there's a line for Florida Rural Legal Services. The question is, do you want it Florida Rural Legal Services and this program, or just this program as part of that motion?
I would prefer it to be just this program, to be honest. I know Florida Rural Legal Services hasn't really been doing a lot in the community. They're located in Fort Pierce.
Needs to be us.
Yeah, and it's just really important to have that kind of access. So I try to, I would rather give this program as, as much as it might need to be sustainable, and if there is leftover, we can talk about Florida Rural Legal Services. But I just wanted to clarify if that was the motion, because I'm fully in support of that.
Yeah, and I would, I would also like to give the full amount to this program.
Mr. Administrator, are you good with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Board, noted.
Checking his pockets.
What, the purpose of my asking for this is that since the funders stepped up to the plate to provide services here in Indian River, I think the taxpayer dollars need to stay here in Indian River as well. And we're, we're guaranteeing that that program will be successful and that the funds here will stay locally, so that's why.
I know you and I talked about this a long time ago, months ago, whatever. You said you were working on it, and back then I thought it was just a fabulous idea. And I'm so glad and happy for you and Ryan and your staff, and Lisa and Meredith, and then Johns Island folks that got involved behind this to see it, to see it happen. And because that, and speaking with Judge Mens back when we were on the canvassing board, when we weren't counting votes, she was talking about this also with regards to, we get all this stuff, and the forms are, they're not even filled out right, so they have to reject them. And the fact that these folks can get some professional advice is just completely just awesome.
Yeah, and it really needs to be said that, you know, Johns Island, those people up there really step up to the plate a lot of times for everything in this county. And I really appreciate from the bottom of my heart, and I know that the users of this program will appreciate them stepping up to the plate and the United Way as well, and their funders, to assist these people that really need the help. So it really needs to be emphasized again that that's a big, a big kudo for them.
All right, so we're clear on the, on the motion? Am I going to motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Lor? Dylan, you good with it?
I am good, if I just may have a moment. I want to echo the clerk's thank yous to all the folks, but I want to add one additional thank you, which is to Jeff. Thank you for stepping up, really helping get this done, working with all the partners. I think this is going to be a great program, a great legacy as, as you move on to other things in your life. So just a thank you to you.
Randy, you good with it? So we're clear. Randy, you good? Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. No opposed, pass this 5-0. Good job, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you very much.
All right, and moving on to 5C. Presentation from Curtis Paulson, Vietnam Veterans of Indian River County Incorporated, reference the 2023 Mary Snyder Golf Tournament, which, by the way, I'm already signed up for. So, and here with Curtis, I believe, is, by the way, Curtis is a U.S. Army retired, and he was president of the Veterans of Indian River County and past vice president of the Veterans Council of Indian River County. And Vic Diaz, United States Marine Corps retired, and Holly McDougall, and whoever else you got there with you. So.
Craig Wasco.
There you go, okay. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, commissioners. You'll have to excuse me. I went through probably one of the hardest fights of my life for the last eight months, but I'm here. So thank God to Mayo Clinic and Indian River. This is our eighth year, believe it or not. Eight years of just something real small that we thought, yeah, make, rake a few dollars for our veterans in the community. And now, I did some math the other day, and we're, in the eight years that we've been doing this, we've raised over $750,000 for our veterans in this community. And I know there's some stuff that's nearing dear to your all's heart because we're doing it for housing, and for low-income housing, and for the veterans that are homeless and soon to be homeless. So I'm going to let Vic and Craig talk, and Holly said she doesn't want to. So she's just going to keep us in line, and then I'll finish up on everything else from the tournament.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank this honorable body supporting us all these years. And we started this journey 15 years ago. We were up, we were up to probably 46 beds for homeless beds, plus we've housed over 200 via HUD-VASH grants and just assisting veterans to get in their home in then 15 years. It's been a journey, but, you know, at Vietnam and veterans of Indian River County, you know, we're getting grayer, but we're still moving. And we will continue with our mission to assist those who have borne the price for our freedom. This golf tournament goes a long way in helping us do that. Talking to Joe Fleischer earlier, you know, we're going to enter another, try to enter another phase of housing to help veterans, maybe help veterans own property. So everything we do is for the veterans, be it Vet Court, be it HUD-VASH, whatever a veteran needs, we're there to assist them. And I want to thank this body for all the support you've given us over the years. We couldn't do it without the support of the county and the people of Indian River County. So thank you.
You might call me the driving force behind all of this because I manage a car show. Get the pun, driving. I've done this, or chaired it, I should say, for going on 13 years. And basically, our funding, the money that we raise, funds veterans' assistance in conjunction with Vietnam Veterans of Indian River County. But our funding goes a little bit to the Elks Lodge, the veterans fund there, which does the same thing. But if somebody needs an air conditioner, somebody needs assistance in some other way, we're there to help them for that. We've probably generated over 12 years, this is our 13th year coming, the day after the golf tournament on June 18th, we've probably generated about $40,000 in nickels and dimes. But in total, it means an awful lot. So we're very thankful that, again, we get to support the Sheriff's Department, you all, some of you folks have been at the car show, and I hope you come and attend again. But we have the Purple Heart Canes there. We have, we'll have the Blood Mobile this year. So we're involved in the community tied in in a number of different ways. So the Vet Center from Jupiter comes up and talks to a lot of our people. So it's just fun, it's a great day. And like I say, we raise money in nickels and dimes, but we do it all here on one weekend. The golf tournament on Saturday, car show on Sunday. So we thank you for, again, your support and the support of our police department, our sheriff, county sheriffs, really, helped me a lot. Thank you.
I do want to add one last thing. Every penny stays in Indian River County that we raise.
Okay, so that being said, our golf tournament is on the 17th of June. It's at Sandridge. We have both courses. Bella and you all have been so kind to let us use both of those courses. And that's what really generated even more funds because we had such, so much, we had so many golfers that we couldn't hold them with one course. So now, we had over 220 golfers last year. And anybody that golfs knows, when you have 220 golfers, it's, it's crazy, especially when 75% of them are vets. So the tournament is the 17th. Check-in is at 7:00. We have a scramble, excuse me, I'm sorry, at 8:00 is when we will start the tournament. It is $75 per golfer. We kept that really, really low purposely so that some of the vets and some of the people can just come out and speak with the vets and golf with them. As I said, I did see yours, Mr. Airman and Mr. Zito's also. After the tournament, we have our luncheon at the fairgrounds because Sandridge cannot handle it at this time. So out of the graciousness of you all, it's great that we get to use the fairgrounds. We have sponsorships all the way from $5,000 all the way to $1. So if you want to play, if you'd like to sponsor or just get your foursome in, you can go to vviirc.co, and that will walk you through it real quick. And with the brain trust that we have, no, these guys have it all. They, they got it down to a science now. Other than that, I just hope that we get to see everybody over there to support our veterans. I know West Palm Beach is coming, including a new administrator, and the outreach program and the suicide prevention program is going to be there. Not only do they come and speak, put up little tents if it's, when you're over at the golf tournament and at the fairgrounds, and hopefully we get to see you all there. I know majority of you are always there, and for that, we thank you very much. If there's any other questions that you'd like to call, you can reach me at 772-538-2484. And again, my name is Curtis Paulson. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you, everybody, for doing this. This will be, I don't know how many years I've played in it, but I got a really good team this year with Mr. Zito and Randy King and our utilities director. We're, we're playing in it. And it's always a good time, and it's good to be with a lot of veterans. I know Commissioner Fleischer's always been there. He doesn't play golf, but he's there to give inspiration to all those that think they can play golf. Golf is not.
Golf is not always considered an organized sport, but you have made it a well-organized sport, and that's probably why I don't play, you know. I don't do organized sports. But I, I want, I just want to say thank you for the segue, because you never ask for anything, Sarge. You do, you do, you do, you give, you've developed, it's such a successful event. Please let us know what else we can do in order to add to it if you run into anything, because June the 17th, June the 17th is not far off, but if you run into anything, let us be able to be there to assist, as you all were there to assist us, so we have the lives we have. Thank you, veterans, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody have any comments?
No, don't, don't miss the car show, that's always terrific, too. I never miss that.
Well, great, but thank you again for all the time, and we hope to see a bunch of people out there. There always is, in fact, Michael Hott will be out there bagpiping for us this year, which is a new one. And with that, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to five D. This is a presentation of proclamation recognizing the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Week. And this will be presented by Commissioner Fleischer, and I see we have the sheriff and the undersheriff and, and a couple other folks here from the sheriff's office to accept this, and I would say that yesterday was, we had a memorial service at the courthouse, provided by the Sheriff's Department and other agencies, and it was very well done and very well received, and we, we thank you for your service. Commissioner Fleischer, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. There's a whole lot more law enforcement out there. Why don't you all come down? Come on down. Cue it up. Cue it up. Give me some direction. That's your law enforcement. One of them all here, because quite frankly, so many, we had so many dispersed in the audience as well. Yesterday, we always start Law Enforcement Week, National Police Week, with a memorial service. And Sheriff, I want to thank you for the well-conducted presentation. It was, it was attended by many citizens, or members of all law enforcement agencies, and your commissioners as well. And we appreciate that you do that. It's a very fitting ceremony. I wish the entire 165,000 citizens were there at the same time, but this is another opportunity to say how much we truly appreciate our law enforcement. Law Enforcement Week runs the gamut, again, starting with the memorial ceremony, but it's also a time where we can appreciate all of our law enforcement, the men and women who serve, that keep us, keep us to be able to have the lives that we deserve, and safe and secure. It's a profession that many, many are called and few are chosen, but more importantly is, they do it every day, every day, with the risk of delivering to their families the ultimate sacrifice. And it, it just is daunting and, and just a horrendous concept to know that a stolen bike, the lack of an insurance card at a traffic stop, or a domestic violence response, or for that matter, any, anything respond, any response that law enforcement has to make with their last act, their last act, they've said goodbye to their family, hoping they have a good day at school, hope they have a good day at work, and they're there working for you. And it just is absolutely senseless that somebody doesn't want to pay the price of a ticket, pay the price of going to court, being represented, maybe doing a little time courtesy of the sheriff's office for free meals and a stay. But no, they want to take a perfect, a dedicated life to your security. I just want to say that, you know, while many of you were not there yesterday, you can do something, you can say thank you each and every day, not just this week, each and every day, when you see a law enforcement officer. I could tell you firsthand, it makes a difference. And I know that my esteemed colleague can say the same, when you're appreciated, and I know that Indian River County appreciates all of their law enforcement. We are very different, we don't sustain a lawsuit. I came from a jurisdiction where we went to a law enforcement funeral just about every three to four weeks, a whole different world. I'm glad I'm here, I'm glad they're here, and I, I want the citizens to appreciate how much they do for us, knowing in the back of their minds, when they're, when they're dealing with something, that, that sacrifice may be in the game. So, let's appreciate all of our law enforcement. With that, I will present the proclamation as follows. Recognizing the week of May the 14th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week, whereas across the United States, more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serve in communities, including the dedicated members of the Indian River County Sheriff's Office and Indian River County Municipal Police Departments. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May the 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. Whereas, on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 54 hours. And since that first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 25,000 United States law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas, 245 law enforcement officers and 25 K-9 officers died in the line of duty in 2022. And the average annual number of law enforcement fatalities between 2012 and 2022 is 163. Whereas, National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund honors and remembers those recently fallen law enforcement officers who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and the price and given their lives to protect and serve. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, in honor of the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation, May 14th through 20th, 2023 is recognized as National Police Week, and May the 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and the United States' flags should be flown at half-staff. Duly adopted the 16th day of May, 2023, and signed by all five county commissioners. Sheriff.
Good morning. I'm honored to be able to lead and work beside such great heroes every single day. I appreciate that our community pauses every year to recognize our law enforcement. I appreciate the fact that all five county commissioners and our new county administrator were there yesterday for the event. It's always a moving event. I was honored to read the names of those who lost their lives in Florida. We did not read all 245 names and the K-9 names that gave the ultimate sacrifice in our country. Our folks wake up every day, never knowing if they're going to go home. We've been very blessed here in Indian River County, that we've got a great community. We only have one name on that wall. We have some others that died along the way that we've lost, and certainly some great friends, but this is a great community, and we've got great support here. We appreciate all of the support. Our, our office is already overflowing with cookies and people coming by to donate things and, and give back to us, and, and we certainly appreciate that support. So, thank you, guys, for taking time to do this, and thank you all for being there yesterday. It really means a lot to us.
Commissioner Law?
Great, well, obviously, I recognize a lot of the faces, and I say, stay safe, guys and gals, and God bless you.
Madam Vice Chairman?
No, I, I echo my fellow commissioners' comments, stay safe, we appreciate everything you do, and thank you for everything.
Commissioner Moss?
Huge thank you, and to the community, that ceremony is always very moving. It's a very moving, very touching ceremony. I guess we'll try to get the word out better, because I'd, I'd like to involve more people from, people from the community. It's a, it's a perfect time and a perfect way to say thank you for everything you do.
Counselor.
Just echo everything else, but definitely thank you, and thank you to the men and women of your organization, and the men and women of the other city municipal organizations who help within their respective jurisdictions.
Just want to thank you to all the law enforcement officers in our county for your service to our community and keeping us safe and serving the needs of our residents. We appreciate you, and again, thank you very much.
Gentlemen and ladies, on behalf of somebody that's served very close to you all over so many years, I appreciate what you do, and being the father of a law enforcement officer, I appreciate that too, so thank you very much.
Hi, thank you.
All right?
Good, thank you.
All right?
Good job yesterday.
Would you like that? You have a few of these.
Yes, my pleasure, thank you, thank you, good to see you.
All right. Moving on to five E. This will be a presentation of proclamation recognizing May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month, and this will be presented by our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Adams, and present to present, I believe, is Tracy Hernandez, Director of Development, and Derek Weintraub, Indian River County Program Manager for Mental Health.
Fantastic, thank you. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month as May, 2023. Whereas, mental health is key to overall wellness, as mental health influences decision-making, behavior, and consequently, physical health. And whereas, over half of adults living with mental health illnesses do not seek treatment. And whereas, a growing number of youth in the United States live with depression, more than 16% of young people ages 12 through 17 have experienced major depression, with rates of sadness and hopelessness among teenagers reaching their highest point in a decade. And whereas, in 2023, more than 11% of children and adults continue to lack adequate medical insurance coverage for essential mental health services. And Florida is ranked 46th out of 50 states with access to mental health care. And whereas, social stigma, financial barriers, and limited awareness are the primary obstacles to getting help, and as community leaders, we must prepare for an increase in demand on services through education, outreach, and ever greater access to care to ensure our community's overall health. And whereas, it is the duty of each and every one of us to provide continued and consistent access to mental health care resources. And whereas, the commissioners of Indian River County strive to promote a community who supports mental wellness, including greater access to treatment, increasing educational tools and resources for our citizens, and continually supporting those citizens with mental health opportunities. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the board recognizes May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month, adopted the 16th day of May, 2023, and signed by all five commissioners. And welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners and guests. My name is Tracy Hernandez, and I'm the Director of Development for Sun Coast Mental Health Center, a leading mental and behavioral health provider, offering community-based and family-centered care to children, adults, and families in Indian River County and throughout the Treasure Coast. Joining me today is our Indian River County Program Manager, Derek Weintraub, and it is our privilege and pleasure to be here to accept this proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. There's a growing mental health crisis in our country and our communities that is significantly impacting youth, with rates of sadness and hopelessness among teenagers reaching their highest point in a decade. At Sun Coast Mental Health Center, we understand the need for mental health services and support, especially for children and adolescents who represent 74% of the clients we serve. Of the 1,400 clients we serve in any given month, hundreds of students benefit from our therapeutic counseling and targeted case management at more than 80 schools in our four-county service area. Here in Indian River County, we provide services in 20 schools, and close to 370 neighbors in need are currently receiving our mental health care. This year, Sun Coast is celebrating 25 years of serving the community and promoting mental wellness through outreach, advocacy, education, and collaboration. We recognize now more than ever the importance of funding and awareness to ensure access and availability of mental health services for the one in four adults and one in five children who may need them. Sadly, more than half of the adults living with mental health illnesses do not seek or receive retreat, uh, do not seek or receive treatment. On behalf of those whose lives we've changed and for those who still need our help, sincere thanks to all of you for joining us in this community effort to end the stigma, promote healing and recovery, raise public awareness, and increase funding as we empower, engage, and inspire positive mental health and wellness throughout our local area. Thank you, and just a word, quick word from Derek.
Good morning. Adding to those statistics, trauma is the leading cause of death for those up to the age of 45, and the fourth leading cause overall. There's over, there's about 40,000 deaths that are homicide and suicide-related. So for, for depression, anxiety, trauma needs, or just needing to talk to someone, thank you for continuing to trust Sun Coast Mental Health Center.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next proclamation. This will be five F, Recognizing National Safe Boating Week, and this will be presented by Commissioner Law. And I think we have some of our Coast Guard Auxiliary present to, to accept this award. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, sir, I'm Commodore Gary Barth of the Coast Guard Auxiliary, flotilla 56, which is here in Vero Beach, Sebastian.
I'm Paul Deary, also a member of the flotilla.
Richard Martucci, a member of the flotilla and an instructor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation designating May 20th through May 26th, 2023, as National Safe Boating Week in Indian River County. Whereas, for millions of Americans, including those in Indian River County, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity, and whereas, during National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters safely and responsibly. Whereas, safe boating begins with preparation through basic boating safety training on procedures, equipment, as well as equipment, as well as outlining, planning, and preparation. Whereas, hundreds of people lose their life each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and it's estimated the vast majority of all boating-related accidents are caused solely by human error or poor judgment, and not by the boating equipment or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters whose lives were lost by drowning would still be alive today had they been wearing their life vest. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County does hereby proclaim the week of May twentieth through May twenty-six as National Safe Boating Week, with the renewal of year-round efforts to promote safe boating. We urge all of those who are in the water or on the water to attend a safe boating class, practice safe boating habits, and to wear a life jacket at all times while boating. Adopted the sixteenth day of May 2023, and signed by all five county Commissioners. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, and just like to say that we offer boating safety classes once a month, and we vary it, once, one week it's in, or, sorry, one month it's in Vero, and the other month it's in Sebastian. And anyone who's seventeen years of age or under, it's free, so there's no need not to have a safe boating class. Many times, we see people go out there, and everybody, I'm wearing a very comfortable life jacket today. They're not nearly as bulky as some of the used to be, but you have to be sixteen or better before you can wear this type, but there's no reason not to have one on. Many times, people go out there, their boat goes under the water, especially Sebastian Inlet, which is not the kindest inlet, they can't get the boat, can't get the life jacket on in time. You know, it's there, but they can't get on, we find them holding on to coolers and things like that. If you just wear this thing, it'll do good. It won't hurt you to wear it. The other thing is, today, too, we will have a display down at West Marine in Vero Beach, if anybody has any questions, and also, on June the third, if you're interested, there'll be an open house at Coast Guard Station Fort Pierce from ten in the morning till two in the afternoon. It's great displays, and a lot of things can be answered down there, but please, 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 but of all means, please wear your life jackets when you're out there on the water. They only work if you wear them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Okay?
She got it.
Moving on to the last presentation of proclamation, certainly last but not least, this will be a presentation of proclamation recognizing Memorial Day 2023, and this will be presented by Commissioner Moss, and I believe Cynthia Ryan from the Veterans Association, and Father Cliff here, is Dave Newhart here?
But Board of Director Sergeant Labby is here, too.
Okay, all right. Welcome. Commissioner Moss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I'll invite everyone to the two ceremonies that are held on Memorial Day. That's May twenty-ninth this year, Monday, May twenty-ninth. The one in Vero Beach is at Riverside Park at nine AM, and the one in Sebastian is at River View Park at eleven AM. So you can attend both. Usually, I do. It's a great way to start the day. I highly recommend. Proclamation in recognition of Memorial Day 2023. Whereas, in the years following the end of the Civil War, flowers were placed on soldiers' graves as a solemn reminder of the scourge of war and its bitter aftermath of sorrow. And whereas, the Congress in a joint resolution approved May eleventh, nineteen fifty, provided that Memorial Day should be set aside as a day of prayer for permanent peace. And whereas, Memorial Day is a cherished tradition, one whose observance helps us appreciate our history, our values, and our responsibilities by reminding us that freedom is not free, and that America is strongest when we set aside personal differences and strive together. Whereas, on Memorial Day, we revere those who came from every part of the country, of every background and belief, and united to answer the call to protect and preserve the ideals of democracy, and now lie in hallowed graves, having sacrificed their lives so that war might end, and all people may live in freedom and prosperity. And whereas, Memorial Day honors those who put the welfare of their fellow Americans before their own, performed their duties loyally and selflessly, without thought of recognition or personal safety, and went further and endured longer to contribute to the greater national effort. And whereas, the Veterans Council of Indian River County, consisting of twenty-eight veterans' organizations, representing over eighteen thousand veterans residing in the county, will host numerous Memorial Day ceremonies on Monday, May twenty-ninth, 2023. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board urges all Indian River County residents to join together and rededicate ourselves to strengthening our nation's promise to pray for permanent peace and to honor our fallen fellow Americans, both known and unknown, who sacrificed their freedom to ensure our own. Adopted the sixteenth day of May 2023, and signed by all five county Commissioners. And welcome to, Ms. Ryan, Executive Director of Veterans Council.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your acknowledgement of those who have served and sacrificed. The mission of the Veterans Council is to provide continued support and advocacy for veterans. As many know, our main program is through direct aid. We, over the last year, have strengthened that program to embrace a more holistic approach, and by that, we've built upon our direct aid to provide much more collaborative, collaborative community support for veterans, and we do that by working with, at this point, we have relationships with a hundred and thirty other nonprofits in Indian River County, as well as government agencies, to really take a deep dive into what are the needs of veterans, and how can the community support them. Another key program is the transportation program, which is free transportation to the West Palm VA Medical Center, Monday through Friday, as well as local doctor's appointments. We have sincere gratitude to the county for collaborating with us on that program. That has grown in need in the last year by thirty-nine percent, so people are using the transportation, it's for them and their caretakers. This is a critical link for medical care that they would not otherwise have accessibility to. And lastly, I want to give thanks to the Veteran Service Officers. The VSO is a huge asset to the county. We appreciate Melissa, and John, and Alan, and all their staff for what they do, and I think it's important to understand that twenty-nine percent of veterans live in poverty in Florida, and the VSO provides that link for them to access their VA benefits, and that is a key factor in the veterans living below the average of people in poverty in the state of Florida. And so, as much as we can do to support that staff, we do, we love them, they're a huge asset, so thank you to the county commission and the community for everything.
And what is the best way for them to contact you? What's a preferred method?
Our office phone number is seven-seven-two-four-one-zero-five-eight-two-zero, and we also have a website, veteranscouncilofindianrivercounty.org. So, anyway, if you're a veteran and you just need some assistance, or not really sure, we link people up, so the answers never know. We will find who you need, what support, and if you know a veteran, you could call and say, hey, what services would be available?
Thank you so much.
Cynthia, you want to say thanks for all?
Y'all do, and all the other veterans' organizations, such as when Curtis was here with a golf tournament, all those groups, Vietnam guys, everything, without y'all, we would be sorely not treating our veterans like they need to be treated, and we thank you for helping out and doing everything that y'all do.
Commissioners, any other comments? No, I do, well, we're talking about our Veterans Council, and I have to say, you know, I travel, I visit bases, I see other Veterans Councils, sometimes comprised of about five people, just trying to do something. You guys, we, I think we have the best of the best for Veterans Council, with all of the extensions within the community that you provide, and that we can work with you. It's absolutely incredible, the amount of effort and sacrifice that is given day-to-day for those in need, veterans and non-veterans. I just want to say thank you. Anybody else?
Absolutely, thank you, and we'll see you at both events.
I want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, and then get out and enjoy the festivities. That's what the day is all about, to remember those that paid the ultimate sacrifice, and both services are always so very well-done. The nine o'clock in Vero, and it was, it's eleven o'clock in Sebastian, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, they're very well-done, and honor those that need and deserve to be honored. So, thank you very much. We're done with presentations and proclamations.
No.
About that.
There's no more?
All right. All right, let's move on to item six, approval of minutes, and I will take.
Move approval.
Six A, which is regular meeting of March seventh, six B, special call meeting of March twenty-first, 2023, and six C, regular meeting of March twenty-eighth, 2023.
Move approval for all three, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from public wish to comment on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Let's move on to item seven, information items from staff or Commissioners not requiring board action, and I see Commissioner Moss, under seven A, you have an appointment of James Connaughton to the Environmental.
Yes, if I.
Acquisition panel.
If I may mention briefly, I'm very happy that Mr. Connaughton has agreed to join the panel. He's, has many accomplishments at a national level. He's worked with the President and Congress on all kinds of energy, environment, natural resource, and climate change policies, and he's also, he's an award winner on an international basis. He worked on the creation of four of the largest and most ecologically diverse marine resource conservation areas in the world, so it's just an amazing thing. I'm so happy that he's here, and that he wants to work locally, and by the way, locally, he's already been involved in the Everglades restoration, so I think he'll be a real asset to this panel, and I thank him very much.
Thank you. And then item seven B?
Yes, and I would also, I'd like to invite everyone, this is a ceremony to be held next Monday, it's on Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary, and that is the unveiling of the memorial for the World War II veterans, Merchant Marine, and that's a group that has been unsung heroes for quite a long time, so I think it's wonderful that they get this recognition. We'll actually have six, I'm the emcee of, for the, I'm the master of ceremonies, for the ceremony. My father was a graduate of Kings Point Merchant Marine Academy, class of nineteen fifty, and I'm, my only regret is, I'm sorry he's not here to be part of this, he would absolutely love it, but we have six World War II veterans, one of whom is one hundred years old, God bless, and a recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor. As you may know, last year, Congress took action to honor the Merchant Marine, which long had been an unsung hero, and it's been, it was very dangerous work, especially during wartime with World War II. A lot of ships were sunk, and they were vital, it was a very vital service to supply the troops, so I'm happy that we're doing this, I'm happy that it's local, and again, I invite everyone, it's next Monday, that's May twenty-second, at ten-thirty AM on Veterans Memorial Island. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody wish to pull any items? I would like to talk about eight L, local option gas tax distribution, and eight M, acceptance of school board property.
I have a question, talk about eight W.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the rest.
Ms. Chair, anybody out in the audience?
That's right, anybody in the audience wish to have anything pulled? Seeing none, I'll entertain an op.
Move approval as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Moss, to approve as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five-zero. I'd like to discuss, first of all, eight L, local option gas tax distribution percentages, and I'm going to turn this over to our county administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is just to note publicly, it was updated in the revised agenda published, but the original spreadsheet that was attached to the agenda item included some incorrect figures. They were revised, validated, and we're just wanting to make sure it's noted publicly that they have been republished, and all of you have been provided a copy. We appreciate our municipal partners.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Ms. Kim. Clarification.
Move, move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by myself. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Next, eight M, acceptance of school board property. I will ask Counselor to fill us in on that, just so there's some clarification with regards to this.
Yeah, several years ago, the county approved the Millstone Development. As part of that deal, in the development conditions, there was a requirement for the developer to deed over a piece of property over to the county, which then the county would turn over to the school district. It was eighteen acres in size. The original concept was that it would be used for a school site. In the deed to the county, it simply stated that if there was a reverter clause noting that if it wasn't used as a school site, then it would revert back to the county, we could use as a park or some other purpose. We're about seven years away from the reverter clause going into effect, and the school board still hasn't done anything with the property, and they reached out to me recently asking if we could, if we were willing to take it back, and so, I conferred with staff, and staff was interested in being able to utilize this eighteen acres, and so, with that, simply just brought to the board to approve us taking the property back and requesting if the board supported that, that the chair sign any documents necessary to effectuate such a transaction.
Commissioner, any questions of staff on that, regards to that? Just wanted to make that clear, so there was any discussion or any discrepancy out there. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Laura. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to eight W, disposition of excess equipment at Jackie Robinson Training Center. Commissioner Moss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, in behalf of some of our assistants, some of our assistants would like to know if the county can keep some of this equipment and make it available to employees.
Actually, Madam Commissioner, actually, we, I discussed that with Mr. Zito, some of this equipment is pretty heavy, I mean, these are large, you know, exercise and fitness equipment, and at this point in time, it was recommended with the, almost the immediacy of the demolition, is to, we reached out to the school board, because we did look at, we discussed whether potential opportunities within the county for staff to be able to use this, and there's, I think there's a host of liability issues, as well as making sure you have it centrally located, you have proper flooring, proper equipment, posting. centrally located, you have proper flooring, proper equipment, posting, the proper way to exercise. So right now, it's probably premature, and with the immediacy of this demolition, we did approach the school board, offering to donate to them, and then if they don't take, whatever they may not take, we would, or the, we'd put it out, you know, we would try to sell it and donate it in terms of a final, sorry, via an online auction, that's the word I was looking for. So at this point in time, we, we did discuss it, but we don't think it's appropriate at this point in time.
All right. Okay, well, well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I'll move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Moss. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. With that, commissioners, we will take a five-minute break. Be back at 10:35. Be back in about a half hour. All right, we want to resume the today's meeting. Commissioners, if y'all have no objection, I would like to move Commissioner Moss's item 14E1, Children's Services Advisory Committee membership, to discuss that now because we have the superintendent of schools here. He took time out to come visit us today, and so we want to accommodate him so he can get back to doing what the superintendent does best. So, if you have no objection?
No objection.
All right, Commissioner Moss, it's all yours.
Thank you. It would, it would be my pleasure. As, as you may be aware, in our ordinance, it specifically states that the superintendent of schools is a member of the CSAC main committee. As it turned out, there is a scheduling conflict, so that the superintendent has not been able to attend CSAC meetings last calendar year or this calendar year, with the exception of last night, where we were all very happy to see him. He's a welcome addition. But as, as you know, as my colleagues know, many of the programs are educational in, in nature, so I think it's, it's vitally important to have a representation from the school board, and having discussed it with our attorney, what we, what is suggested is that we change the language to superintendent of schools or designee, so that he can have someone attend the meetings in his behalf and speak for the school district at these meetings. And I think that would be a highly desirable thing to do, so it would, it would require an amendment. And actually, I'll let, I'll turn it over. And, you know, by the way, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Reingold. He's been attending many of the, many of the CSAC meetings, not only the main meeting, but also the grant review subcommittee meetings. There have been a lot of questions by the members as a result of the changes to the ordinance. And not only that, but there are also questions, well, last night, for example, on conflict of interest and that sort of thing. So it's, it's been very helpful to have him there, and I would just like to thank him. And would you like to address the, you know, amending the ordinance?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Commissioner Moss, for your, your kind words. Yeah, basically, in the ordinance for CSAC, it's got seven ex officio voting members basically appointed per their position. There is a note within the CSAC ordinance that says no designee of principals will be allowed for any member of the Children's Services Advisory Committee. I kind of interpreted that to mean that there weren't allowed to be designees, but the issue came up from Commissioner Moss, and certainly if it was this board's will to allow for the supervisor, the superintendent of schools to have a designee, I could certainly draft an ordinance to accomplish that and bring it back to the board for, for approval and consideration. The only other policy question for the board would be, are there any other positions you'd be interested in, in having a designee, or is that the only one you would like to consider? With that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Can we invite Dr. Moore to speak while he's here?
Dr. Moore, welcome.
Thank you for having me, and it was a pleasure joining you last night. Yeah, board meetings, can't miss them. And unfortunately, for the last two years, our board has scheduled meetings, the first Monday of the month was also the same meeting as, as CSAC. So having the opportunity to ensure the school district has voice at these meetings is something that's extremely important. And if the board meetings ever change, please know I would be there as I was before the scheduling conflict. So this is something that I would support and make sure this committee is fully informed regarding any decisions it may make. Thank you.
Mr. Reingold, it clearly says in 10322, item five, no designee of principals would be allowed for any member of the Children's Services Advisory Committee. We can change that?
Yep, it's your ordinance code. You can certainly change it.
Dr. Moore, come on, come on back, I got a question for you. I know you've got a lot of, if, if we change this, and I don't really see a problem with that personally, but if we change this, I know you have some very good people, but we would, I would prefer it to be somebody.
Assistant.
You know, your higher staff, one of your maybe assistant superintendents, something like that, somebody that has a clear knowledge of the direction that you're, that you have, if you're okay with that.
I would give you every, every assurance, each and every single one of you, anyone who represents me will have, be able to speak with, with my voice and be able to make decisions and be fully informed.
Okay. Good. Commissioners, any questions?
Again.
Commissioner Fleischer?
Doc, so would, would that be your assistant?
Would it be an assistant?
Or at, at a minimum, a director?
Thank you.
Which are interchangeable, depending on what area you're talking about.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Commissioner Moss, any questions? Any?
Any, any, otherwise, I'll, I'll move to approve a change.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, what was the motion? I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
To amend it.
Yes, move to, move to, move to amend the language to state that the superintendent of schools may appoint a designee and to, I guess revise that other language. You, you mentioned other language.
Oh, yeah. Basically, the motion was to allow for the superintendent to have a designee, and certainly whatever technical things happen to happen within the ordinance code, I will address that issue.
Oh, okay, thank you. Then that's the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Moore, for being here and for, and for being there last night. And it was, it was very helpful to have him there. Then I wanted to give a brief update on CSAC. I think it's moving forward in a very good fashion, and as I mentioned earlier, want to thank Mr. Reingold for being there. I think he's played a key role in that, being there to, to answer questions. And also, Ms. Powell, Beth Powell, has, has been attending the meetings, and I'm happy to see her. As you know, we're, unfortunately, Roberta had to leave, and we're still in the process of hiring staff for that position to oversee this, and I think, I think that's really critical. And I'm, my only regret is it didn't happen sooner, as I understand it, with regard to that process. The, and this was via Beth Powell last night, she said that they had enough applications, that they had withdrawn the, the advertisement for the position, and they had done a round robin Zoom interview of approximately 20 minutes in length with each candidate, and so they had invited back certain candidates for a second round. So that's, you know, that's where we are at this moment in time, is a second round of interviews for a candidate to fill that position that was vacated by, by Roberta, unfortunately. And then last night, it came up, we do have a full complement on the main committee, and we also have a full complement on the grant review subcommittee. It came up last night, and I don't know if this has happened before, because I've been on it only since last year, but two people, and actually, I'd spoken with both people, and, you know, another person I want to commend is Mr. Bob Schlitt. He's the chairman of the Grant Review Subcommittee, that he reaches out to new people, you know, prior to their becoming part of the committee, because with Sunshine, once they're on it, he can't talk to them, which is, yeah, that's the way it is. So he, he reaches out in advance and speaks with them about their interest in it, anybody who applies, and explains the duties and responsibilities, and ascertains if they can, if that person can meet those, those duties and responsibilities. I think, I think he's doing a great job that way. Last night, we had a situation where a person was denied access to the Grant Review Subcommittee, and that was Susan Meal, and it was by a vote of six to seven. And I, you know, I, I'll say quite frankly, I was a bit disappointed in that, because you may recall, I think everyone was here, with the exception of Commissioner Lor, where we had a conversation last year about Tom Hardy, and that was the Young Journalist Program, and there were the controversy was, well, on social media, he presents as a very liberal, and we don't want this in the schools. So that was it in a nutshell. And what we decided was that what you do on social media is, is personal, it's freedom of speech, and if you can meet the requirements of the program and focus on the program and be neutral in that regard, that's the requirement. So last night, the objection to Susan Meal was, again, a social media or email kind of thing. I, she attended a previous Grant Review Subcommittee meeting, and I was present, and all of her questions were reasonable and appropriate, it was not political. And Doc, Mr. Schlitt also had spoken with her in advance of her coming to any meetings and determined that he felt that she was a good candidate, and he stated that last night. So this is not, you know, I'm, I'm not guessing what he's thinking. He's, he stated openly. So as I said, but the objection was that this person, you know, might be, I think, quotes disruptive to the, the Subcommittee processes, and I, I don't see it that way. I mean, the vote is the vote, but it was, you know, by one vote, this person was denied a position on that committee. And I'm just, I'm sorry to see that happen, because I think we do need to leave politics out of it, and I think we have, at least in the period of time that I've been there. I haven't seen any evidence of that, and I try to attend every single Grant Review Subcommittee meeting and the main meetings. I try to be there for everything, and I, I haven't seen any evidence of it. But at any rate, that's what happened on that part of it. And beyond that, I think what I, what I would suggest, and I've talked to our county administrator about this, and I think staff should determine the timing, but to avoid misunderstanding, miscalculations by individual nonprofits, what I would recommend going forward is that we, we discuss ourselves what we hope to see, and I'm talking about for the future, not talking about this current budget cycle, it's, it's too, it's too late to change anything for that. But in the future, that the five, the five of us discuss it here, you know, what we hope to see for CSAC and what we think the budget, budget should be, so that we can give the staff, you know, more clear directions, so they're not, you know, spinning their wheels, you know, wasting time preparing numbers that, that we're not, that we're, that just don't come from us and we're not comfortable with. So I think it's, it'd be better. So I think it's, it'd be better done by us in advance, you know, before anything's prepared, before staff spends time on it, that staff knows what each of us wishes to see in CSAC. And also, it's an opportunity for, say, Indian River Community Foundation to come in, United Way to come in, the school board can come in and speak to us, taxpayer association can come in, speak to us, any individuals that have personal concerns, just so everyone can be heard. Everyone is, you know, in the same room at the same time, talking about the same thing, which is what, which is what is going, not going to happen, what was denied last night by that vote. And that's what I like, everybody to be under the same tent, in the same room, face to face, at the same time, hash it out and go forward. And I said, I think that, you know, that strengthens sense of community. I mean, yes, we're going to have different opinions, but we respect each other's opinions, we hear each other out, and we figure it out, you know, together.
Was that language used in last night's meeting about identifying somebody who, other than being disruptive?
Well, emails were passed out. I didn't, I didn't read them, but emails were circulated, her emails were circulated at the meeting. I don't have them, and I didn't read them. Perhaps someone does.
That would be very valuable, because you made another assertion about Tom Hardy, that he was, he was denied, attempted to be denied because he was liberal. That very much was not the case, and it was the fact that we had young minds being politically charged at an early age, and there was some concern. There was community concern, which people had come to us, and we had discussed it as well. It had nothing to do with being a liberal or a conservative. It was politically charged topics.
All right.
Other than fun stuff that kids should be able to relate to and to be able to report on to learn journalism.
Well.
I just wanted to clarify that, because it was, you used the word liberal, and that wasn't the case. And I didn't want anybody to misconstrue that.
Yeah, it had to do with social media. Anyone can call it what anyone likes to call it, but it had to do with a political presence.
The way it is.
Yes, a political presence on social media.
Yeah, I was just to bring this to conclusion. I appreciate your update. I think we should definitely be careful of what words we use, but just, I think it would be inappropriate. I don't know where you were going with that, other than maybe totally informational, but if it was to ask us to ask them to re-vote, I don't think that that would be appropriate, because on a board, once they take a vote, just because we may or may not like it, doesn't mean we should put them in a position to ask them to re-vote. I don't, I think that's very dangerous. And as far as input from the commission to CSAC, I get what you're saying, but CSAC has a needs assessment committee that sets what the priorities are, and when that needs assessment is done and presented to us every three years, we basically sign off on it. So we have already told them what needs to be done. And I think a lot of the conversations you're asking us to have, while I'm totally fine having conversations, I think it's more appropriate to have those conversations at CSAC, and maybe you start out in January with those, you move your timeframe back so you can have those conversations instead of waiting till the last minute and kind of feeling like you don't have time to flesh things out. There's nothing that would prevent you guys from having the conversation in October or December or January about where you want to be and what type of programs you want to fund in the following budget, and tie that back to the needs assessment. It's a rolling kind of program. So I would just offer those inputs, and I do appreciate the update, and I don't think that, I think we already handled the action item of this.
Yeah, this is, right. This is intended as an information item only. There's, there's no action required. And when I said the five of us should speak, I was, I meant specifically about the budget, what the budget number should be, and that's for staff. So, and then anyone who wants to weigh in on the budget can weigh in on the budget, the annual budget.
The only thing I'll add to this, I know they're working on it, we need to get an executive director in that position and.
Yes.
And have strong leadership and move on and, and take the politics out of it, so.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10, public items is a public hearing. 10A1, public hearing to consider a resolution electing to use the uniform method for the levying, collection and enforcement of non-adverbal assessments for street paving in the Oslo Park area. And this is legislative, I'm going to turn it over to staff, and I think we want to go straight to the Dylan or the county administrator.
I'll start this.
Okay.
Thank you very much. On December 13th, 2022, the board elected to use the uniform method for the collection of assessments under the statute for the Oslo Park Paving MSBU. Staff proposal was for each property to be assessed $500 per year for 20 years. County would contribute 25% of the costs, and then the county would be able to pay for the roads generally in the area from 11th Street to 13th Street, bounded by 17th Avenue Southwest to 9th Court Southwest. County Attorney's Office recommends that the chair open up the public hearing, take public comments from the public. And with that, as we move forward, I just want to turn it over to the county administrator who had some comments on the item.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. I understand the board previously voted on this project in December of 2022, and in discussing this with staff to better understand the project and the process, I'd like to raise some points for your consideration. First, as this proposes, the assessment is to be set at $500, and essentially is an estimate. The project has yet to be designed, engineered, and there's no preliminary cost estimate has been established. The amount, in reality, could be more, in which case the county could cut, you know, would be required to cover the difference at an even greater share than proposed. Alternatively, the amount could be less than it was originally proposed, as originally proposed at $398, and in that case, the property owners could ostensibly pay more than, than what they thought over the 20 years contemplated. I do understand there's a process to gauge support for a project like this that was not taken, that was not undertaken at the outset. So as I look at this, I'd recommend that we pause the project to allow staff to initiate the design, the engineering, and prepare a preliminary cost estimate that could be used to notify the property owners, so they fully understand, as well as the county fully understands, what are the costs for this project? How much are, are we proposing that the, those that benefit from the project, and then what the actual 25% from the county secondary road fund contribution would be? We could do that by, you know, providing notice to those property owners and ensuring that we achieve that 67% that's set out in the policy of those property owners, you know, indicating they're okay with the costs and the annual MSBU amount prior to proceeding. Of course, we'd bring this back to the board if you're okay with my recommendation, but I'm just concerned that we're setting an amount, and we really don't know the full cost of the road, and we either, the county could be subsidizing a larger portion, or the residents potentially could be paying more than what was contemplated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, any questions, staff, before I open the public hearing? Seeing that, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to come forward, please state your name and address in reference to the subject. Come on down. Come on forward. Whoever wants to come first. Just again, naming that, naming address for the record, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Ingram. I am 1055 13th Street Southwest. And so this question is more of a clarification for protocol. I, if it's not too much to ask at this current time, I'm not understanding what the defined procedures are. There, this process, and not just for what's happening here, but once again, understanding protocol can give the community a better idea for understanding this. This process seems to have been an ongoing process. It seems to have been a process where it has been placed on the agenda for several times, and my, as I said, protocol, but when's the finality of this? We were under the impression that this was a situation that received the approval to move forward, and that was some, some, some time ago. And so, protocol, when something like this happens, what kind of time span do we expect? Because it seems that there's still a great deal of unanswered information, possibilities that this would not happen, that this will not happen. So how does this work? Because I, I don't understand why we're still saying there's some things that we don't know.
So in speaking with staff, you know, at the last meeting, this was proposed to be advertised, and this would be for this meeting, a public hearing to, for the purposes of levying the non-adverbal special assessment, or assessment for the street paving. And in speaking with staff, and I apologize, you know, it's still, I'm in my fifth week. I want to understand what's going on the agenda, want to understand the process. And my understanding is, generally speaking by policy, we seek 67%, we define the defined area, who's going to benefit from the project, and we seek 67% of those, you know, being acceptable or agreeing with the project. It's my understanding that didn't happen. And then the other thing is that we don't have, you know, the preliminary, you know, design, engineering, or cost estimates have been done. So previously, it was established that $398 would be the annual MSBU amount, and now it's set at $500, and it's over a 20-year period. So it gave me reason to pause for concern and to articulate my concerns with the commission. So I think, you know, what we're, what I'm asking, you know, the commissioners, and I've spoken with staff, is that maybe we get that engineering, we get that preliminary cost estimate, and then come back out to the property owners and provide that information to them, and make sure that they then can make an informed decision as to what they want to proceed with the project. Because the last thing that I think the county wants to do, or would impose upon the residents, an amount greater than is to be expected in terms of the cost of the project, or conversely, you know, take on additional responsibilities more than anticipated from the county side. I think we need to know what the cost of the project is, to be fair to the residents and to the, not just of this area, but to the residents of the county as a whole.
And, and I definitely understand the concerns that you have, and it definitely makes sense. But unless I'm misunderstanding the process, the fact that you are saying that there is this huge, huge window maybe for, for differences in price, but if I'm understanding this correctly, the shift changed in the middle of the negotiations for, for having this process done. And so ideas were presented to the, the community of that area, and so it just took a different direction than when we originally started out. And so I am asking, is, are things like this in the habit of not having a foundation, not having documentation, not having facts and information before presenting this to the community as to how this could be done?
I would, I would submit, under normal circumstances, based on my, me and my short tenure here, that that's not the case. Just in this instance, this particular project, we want to make sure that we have all the relevant information. Staff will move expeditiously to try to get the preliminary design, engineering, and cost estimates done and bring it back to the commission. We certainly don't want to delay it. I understand there was a decision made in December 2022. It is up to the board if they, if they agree with my recommendation. I just think it's in the interest of the taxpayers, as well as the members that might be paying the MSBU. MSBU, it'd be wise, you know, to have the information, to know what your, what the real amount that you're paying and what the cost for the project is.
And so why, once again, I respectfully accept your explanation, but once again, why is this process so different for us?
Actually, if I, if I can insert into this discussion historically, actually, what had happened over the last couple of years was that the process was made different for this community in order to attempt, under a prior board, to try to get this moving forward. So the typical process, as, as our county administrator had stated, was usually we get a 67% sign-on rate from, from a group that gives us the ability to then move forward with a special assessment project. With this one, your husband did an amazing job getting, collecting signatures and the like, but it wasn't necessarily 67% of all the property owners. And so what the prior board was trying to do was to sort of, well, let's try to acknowledge that there's, you know, some community buy-in. It may not be to the 67%. Maybe we can sort of merge it with the concept of an assessment project where we contribute 25%. And they were really struggling to try to get to a place where the board could approve it. What I think, what the county administrators describing is something that's a little bit more akin to the normal process, whereby which we get this significant sufficient buy-in from the community. We do the traditional then plans, concepts, figuring out what the price would be, make sure the community is still on board, and then bring an assessment program back to the board. I apologize if it seems sort of wonky in terms of what's happened, but I think it was just kind of a historic artifact of trying to merge different programs together to get this done. And board, if you have any questions, or Miss Ingram, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to continue.
This was also done under, under previous Commissioner O'Brien, and Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Fleischer were in on this beginning. And this process takes a very long time to set up, because you have to get all the property owners involved, you have to let them know as to what's going on and how it's taking place. And for whatever reason, it's a little longer than normal, but I think what the county attorney and what the county administrator said, it made it clear, and that's why we're here to talk about it today. Commissioner Fleischer?
And Mr. Chair, thank you for that clarification, and I just want to say that, customarily, when we move forward a project and it is set at a certain price that we've all voted on and approved, there is budget amendment after budget amendment after change order. And that can escalate and change at, by the next meeting. We don't want that to happen. We can't have that happen. If we impose a fee that is to be paid by the taxpayer, that's what the fee is. Otherwise, we have to bring that all back as well. And in addition, the market right now is a volatile one between fuel, cost of, cost of service, and availability, as well as the materials. Some materials are available, some are not. I'm not saying with, with this particular case, but this is the dilemma that we run into when we're looking at a large-scale project. That is very much needed, and, and thank you for all the hard work in getting the commitment from so many individuals to say, yes, that's what we want to do. What we need to do is set the rate, and that's the rate you should anticipate for the work you anticipate being done. And it's, it's a very difficult balance. County Administrator makes a very valid point. We need to be committed to an accurate number so that you know exactly where your budget is, where the budget of the project is, and we don't have to worry about having to bring it back and having to adjust it again. I'll tell you that some of the MSBU's and MSTUs have been changed over the years. There was one, I think, in Vera Lake Estates, we, we met and had to move it from, they were paying $19 a year for roadway and roadway improvements to a, what had been initiated as a subdivision that was then now localized. We then moved. We then moved that, and after public discussion and public meetings, we moved their MSBU to $50 a year. And some even wanted more. I don't think that's the case here. So, we need to be accurate and not, and not go beyond the expectation or underestimate the value of the job before it gets done.
And once again, I understand and I appreciate that, that clarification. I guess my, my concern is, for, for us, it has been a long, hard process.
Yes.
And I, there are so many variables that are making it difficult to, to, to do certain things. People, you know, people have obligations, people, you know, the timing of situations like this, but I, once again, you know, educate me if that, if that needs to be done. But it, I, we felt like we walked into a situation where this and this and this had been approved, taken care of, or whatever the case, and seems like every time we come back, there's something else that needs to be different. And so, I don't understand how financially, the, the, the commission or the entities that are responsible, how can you function within your, of, your, your monies if, if you don't know information when you're, when you are making negotiations? So, anyway.
Values have changed, values have changed, and I just want to cite an example. The, the IG Center, when it was first earmarked, was at $2.4 million. And then we looked at, it was going to be $4 million. The entire project got delayed. That's a $10 million building. And we don't want that to happen. We want it to happen so that you know from the very beginning what you're going to be expected to, to pay for the improvements that need to be done.
And one final comment, this may be a simplistic comment, but when I decide to purchase a home, I do not say yea or nay. If, if the, if the business is to do this process for me, they have to present the, all of the information I need to know, and they don't, and, and so, to present something and have us excited about it, and, and not explaining that this will change, this might change, this might change, to me, it may be simplistic, but that is just a, a poor business habit.
Missing, since we've met before, and, and as you know, when I, when I came in after Commissioner O'Brien, he had shared with me that, that this project was something he'd been working on for years. And I was excited to share with you and, and Lonnie the same. I just heard the administrator say he was going to expeditiously have his staff look into these prices. I may have been remiss when I was somewhat celebrating that information with you, but after meeting with, with the administrator and others, I do think this was the right choice, because we have to have the right amount before we can tax you. So, I heard expeditiously, I'm going to hold him to that, and, and you can hold me to that. And we will move forward, and I will be in touch with you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is, uh, Gallo Latimore. And what I came to say is, here's a lot of retired people living out there, living on Social Security, and that's it. So, when you say $500, that's a lot of money to come out of my Social Security check. Remember that when y'all get ready to put a price. I don't mind paying my way, but it's just certain things I can't afford. And $500, you say you're going to take away the property, right? If we don't pay it. So, think about all the older people that live in out there, own Social Security, cannot pay that.
You're absolutely right.
I understand you don't know right now, but I wanted y'all to know that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Hi, how y'all doing? Thank you for being here. I'm Sabrina Williams, and basically, 1155 Ninth Court, Southwest Vera Beach, Florida. And basically, I'm saying the same thing, sir. They were saying like 20 years, that's a long time. God forbid, you know, if we live to see 20 years, I pray to God I do, but that's a lot. 20 years a long time. And I don't have a problem with it being paid or not paid, because I have kids on the street, even the safety for the kids, maybe, they want to be speeding down the road, but I don't know. I just know that it's hard for me to afford it. I'm a single parent. I work minimal ways, and that's a lot on me. And thank y'all for everything y'all done, and that's all.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Uh, I'm with President Premier Christian Chot at 1060 11th Street Sideways. Yeah, I have a letter from your guys, so, uh, we been there so long, and, uh, what I, my concern is, we have a chot and a parking lot, and the extra lot, so this is $500. I want to know if we got to pay for each of them, $500. It's going to be like $1,500 a year. Or what you're going to charge us, because, because we, we pack the car in the chot property, then we got the lot on the corner, so we need to know if we're going to pay for each of them, $500 a year.
That's why we have to figure out the estimate, sir. It could be, could be less than 500.
I hope it is. I will appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, but you'll be informed.
That's all the thing I need, yes. We wait for you guys, so whenever the time come, just let us know.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. We don't mind to pay, so we, we, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Denise Law. I attended the last meeting where they gave us a preliminary assessment price. So, now you're saying that it's changed?
We, go ahead, if you want to ask.
We, we haven't done a study on it, and the study is going-
It's an estimate at the last meeting.
Correct, they did give the estimate.
Preliminary assessment price.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, now you don't know what it's going to be?
I think with the new administrator in place, he saw a reason to pause.
Make a big difference?
Well, it does, if you want to follow our-
You just pass the information along to the next representative?
There hasn't been a study done, an estimate study done.
The arbitrary figure of 67%, where did that come from?
That's in policy.
Yeah, that's a historic policy for Indian River County for our assessment projects.
Historic policy. So, you're talking 67% of the collective people in the Oslo Park area?
In, in the road, in the affected areas that the roads would go in.
Homeowners only?
Yes, ma'am.
What about people who own the rental properties?
It would be the owners of the properties.
Yep, the owner of the property.
Okay. So, um, and I'm a little confused as to why this was on the agenda today, if you don't have your ducks in a row and no information to give us.
So, it was on the agenda, because at the last meeting, it was, there was permission to advertise this item, and it was to bring it forward. And then when I saw the full staff report, I started asking questions of staff to better understand. I'm having a lot of meetings and asking a lot of questions, and in the process of that, that's when I, you know, mentioned individually, teach the board members my concerns, because as you said, you received a preliminary estimate of 398, and now it's 500. I think in fairness to you, as well as other taxpayers, we need to know what the actual amount is.
A hundred and some dollars difference. That, my, my, my concern about that is, we had a preliminary estimate, and now that's out the window, and we don't know what it is.
Well, and, and the goal from the county administrator is that we are going to get a more definitive number, something based-
Why is that process taking so long?
Our, our goal is to get a more definitive number for the, the folks in the community so that we have a long-range understanding of what the costs will be.
That didn't answer my question.
Again, it's taking so long, because as I reviewed the agenda item, you know, and it was supposed to go forward today, as I reviewed the agenda item that was submitted, I had questions, and I would be remiss, you know, in not fulfilling my, you know, my obligations to the commission and the community, not to bring up the concerns, the fact that there was an ironclad number in here.
You have attended here to get information, and you have nothing to give us.
Okay, well, what I'm sharing is, I want to make sure that we get the right number for you and for the community.
I appreciate your information. Second thing, these streets are dirt. The traffic is supposed to go slow. There are 12 to 15 children, just on my street alone, who play in the street, which is a concern. I have seven grandchildren. I'm concerned about these kids, little kids.
Mm-hmm.
Five, six, seven, 10 years old, they're playing in the street. Is there any way we could get one of those empty parcels of land that is on one of those roads, there's several on mine, on my 11th Terrace, and just build them a little playground? So, we can get them off the street? Because once you pave those roads, and you don't put up slow children signs, which I just talked to the Public Works, and they said, no, we can't do that, because it's not an HOA factor, factored, uh, a place. So, you can't put any signs up saying, please, slow children. Once you pave those roads, the risk factor is going to multiply a thousand times for those kids playing in the streets. How can we rectify this?
So, I can only share personal experience. I'm currently building in an area, and I am on one of the main roads, this happens to be paved, but the main road, the road in which my house will be located is dirt. I do notice that in, in and throughout the neighborhood, there are a number of homeowners that have taken it upon themselves to put out those little, you know, the kids are playing here. You know, I have two kids, I have a seven and 10-year-old, I understand exactly.
Of course, they're willing to do that, absolutely.
So, I mean, it, it just, it's kind of difficult.
State-approved signs, they may just rip them down, you know? I mean, I'm concerned for these children, I mean, they have their-
So-
The bikes in the middle of the road, I mean, they're playing ball, they're playing with their basketballs, you know, they're playing tag, you know, somebody's going to get hurt.
So, I hear your concerns. I don't, I'm not, I don't want to pretend to be a traffic engineer, so I'll meet with our Public Works Department, and we'll talk about, maybe that's, if this can be done, that's, could be part of the project. But I will, I need to talk to them, because I don't know, because there's certain requirements and where you can set those signs, because there's certain issues with cars. So, I, let me just talk to them, okay?
Maybe you can find, maybe one of the owners of some of the parcels of land that are willing to donate the land, to make a, as a humanitarian act of kindness, paying it forward, to donate some land to, to create a small, just a small, not as big as Pocahontas Park, but something where they could be contained within a, a playing area, so the parents are not worrying about them getting mowed down by somebody not paying attention or going 50 miles an hour down this road. So, thank you, thank you for your time and information.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob McParland, 650 Belfast Terrace, Sebastian. I don't have a dog in this fight, but I was just, you know, sitting here thinking, and my concerns are, what is the demographics of this community? Is it a lot of seniors? Is it people that are living in poverty? Because basically, the $10 a week is what the charge would be, that could be a mountain to them. And I wondered if they considered, you know, the possibility of an application process for people that are in hardship or in poverty, that, you know, they could be paid forward. And, you know, I remember, I think it's almost 20 years ago, when the county put the, the water up in Sebastian, and I had two lots, and I believe it was like seven grand that I, I had, but the county offered, you know, I believe it was seven years at a low interest rate, you know, and that, that definitely helped me out at the time, because I was definitely not where I'm at in my career now, and, and very financially challenged. So, any consideration for these, and again, the, the homeowners, you know, being afforded, if they're renting the property, that cost is just going to be passed down to them. So, I would just ask you to consider anything that you can to help the people that are suffering in a hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Good morning, folks. Trevor Loomis, 6555 35th Place. In my spare time, I'm the CEO of Indian River Habitat for Humanity. We have built upwards of 100 homes in this, in this area. We own somewhere between 25 and 30 additional lots, where we'll be building homes down there over the next year or two. While I am not opposed to this project in principle, positive step for that neighborhood, my concern echoes the, the gentleman who spoke before me, and that is on a monthly affordability basis. And I would encourage you to heed the county administrator's request to pause, because we're living in a, in a time right now when homeowner's insurance is out of control, and there's no real good way to forecast what those increases are going to be on an annual basis. The, the current real estate market is inflated, that's probably not going anywhere, and so, taxation, property tax rates are, are high, for, especially for new homeowners, and rentals, as those, as the, those values go up, and those landlords are assessed a higher amount, all of those, all of those dollars are passed on to the renters and the homeowners in this area, who are, in many cases, lower income, and are going to have a much harder time absorbing, absorbing those additional monthly costs. So, if you're talking about anything from $10 to $50 a month, I think it is of utmost importance that we have specificity and a plan in place and a timeline, so that you're, once these homeowners and residents are starting to be assessed, that there's some sort of timeline on the horizon of, you're not just paying to pay, but this is when the work is going to be done, this is what it's going to cost. Additionally, to have consideration and have a plan so that we don't, as, as a builder down there, we are one of, of several, that we're not running into construction and site prep issues that are changing as the, as the elevation of the road is changing, that is another consideration that needs to be made. So, I would appreciate a full, um, plan and investigation into what this project actually will entail, the actual cost, and an actual timeline. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I will move that we continue to hit the pause button on this, have the administrator give us a timeline on when the study can be done, bring this back to this body, as well as all of the residents that will be notified, either by mail or in person, to get that percentage that we need, and just hope that everyone will be patient until we can resolve that.
Second. I'll be glad to second that. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, any further discussion?
Nope.
That we have a motion by Commissioner Law to have the county administrator, per his discussion, to bring it back for further information in regards to all aspects. Counselor?
So, I want to be clear, because of where we are in the, in this sort of process under this statute, I will view this as a denial of the ordinance, so I can at least let the property appraiser and the tax collector know that the ordinance did not pass. But then, on top of that, as part of the motion, is all the other directives for the county administrator.
You being more comfortable with what we-
No, 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 that's fine. I just wanted to, to explain publicly what's going to happen with the ordinance, so there wasn't surprise, and I will get that information to tax collector and property appraiser.
Okay, if you're good with that, I'm good with that. All right, commissioners, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, moving on to 10A2, public hearing to consider a resolution electing to use the uniformed method for the levying, collection, and enforcement of non-advalorem assessments for water portion of the North County Septic to Sewer Project. Again, this is also legislative in nature, and with that, I'll turn it over to the county attorney.
Thank you very much. On May 2nd, the board approved the final as-built resolution for the water portion of the North County Septic to Sewer Project. At the meeting, the board set the total cost at two, well, per property, sorry, for $2,247.76 per parcel, and at an interest rate of 3.25% for 10 years. Today, simply, the county attorney's office comes to you seeking- comes to you seeking permission to utilize the uniform method of collection of assessments under the Florida statutes, such that this item would then be placed on the tax roll this fall. I will note that property owners have 90 days, as of May 2nd, to actually pay off the assessment in full, and without any interest. Otherwise, the item will end up on the tax bill. With that, county attorney's office recommends to open the public hearing, take any public comment, close the public hearing, and then approve the ordinance. And with that, I'll be available for questions.
Commissioners, any questions, staff?
Mr. Chairman, no. Just, I wanted to make a comment, because I heard from many of the citizens, the affected parties in the community, and as far as the assessment, I, I think that we have to ensure, again, just as this previous case, that we need to give the best in public notice and affected parties' notice as to a timeline, as to a, an impact. Again, today's decision is, as I say, is ministerial. It's, it's ensuring that we have a collected, a collection body for the fees, and it is not the, the county, it'll go through the tax bill. Well understood, but there, in discussion, when people got their notices, and yes, we did notice everybody in the community, and I want that clear, but I guess sometimes the, the information might have been perceived as either a solicitation, maybe perhaps we need, we need to ensure that we clearly and boldly mark this as, as important as it should be, because some may have discarded the information that they were given throughout the, the journey to get this process going, and the, the numbers may have been a sticker shock now, because they did not know of the sequential order of impact, and then, then again, to be, have it placed on, on this journey, and the fees calculated, and then, again, the, we move it to the tax collector to ensure that it is a well-funded project. In, in short, what I'm saying is, there may have been a little bit of confusion, and it may have been because of the type of notice that we gave. Maybe it's got to be stamped with big roll red letters on, on the envelope. Maybe we have to look at a different modality, because a lot of people appear to be unaware. So I, I just wanted to bring that up at this time, and I've explained to many that this was just a procedural move to ensure that we had the collection body. Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody else before opening the public hearing? With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Take your name and address.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Bob McParland, Sebastian. Is, my first one is, is this is just for laying the pipe? This does not include hook up to the sewer?
So, so, well, first off, the sewer portion of this project has been paid for through grants through the county and the like. There's no part of that that's being charged to the, to the citizen, or the property owners. The assessment's actually only related to the water portion of the overall project.
Okay, so is that hooking up to the water, or that's just laying the water line?
I, I think they're still going to have to pay the normal hookup fees, assessment charges, and the like, for the water. But Sean is going to approach if I have stated anything incorrectly.
He's coming down. Who's Cindy?
Sean Leiski, Utilities Director. No, Dylan is correct. I mean, the, the assessment is to install, to help us install the public infrastructure, which is the water main through the streets. There is still a, a cost associated with the actual connection to that water main.
All right, because that's, you know, part of my concern, because you're running out to basically a $200 a month for them to pay off this for 10 years. Maybe it could be extended a little longer, and again, the same.
No, 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 I, I think, Sean, and clarify this, it's $2,000 per property. So you're talking, like, divided out over 10 years.
It's about $2,000, $2,400 per property, divided out over 10 years. It ends up being about $300 a year. Roughly, when you add in the tax, the first year's around 300, and it's going to go down from there each year, based off of the interest in the, the principal.
So roughly $200 a month?
Not a month, Bob.
Okay, all right. Okay, my math's a little off, Sean. All right, but again, my same concerns are the demographics of, of where the pipe's being laid. You know, there's a lot of people that are, again, retired. Disposable income is not as high as it once was, as well as the homeowner insurance crisis. People's bills are way out of hand concerning those. So if you could do sort of a demographic poll of the area, and then maybe, again, a hardship program for some of those that are challenged. That's, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Move approval?
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none. Commissioners, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item B, public discussion items, 10B1, request to speak from Ryan Holmes, regards Citizen Review Board. And I would tell you that we take no action on a citizen review board if that person is present normally.
Uh-uh.
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 12, Department Matters, 12D1, proposed amendment to County Code of Ordinances, Sections 104.03, Retirement System Permission to Advertise. Is our Human Resources Director here, or you want to take it, Mr. Administrator?
Well, in her absence, I will. So if the board will, FRS, we're, we are a member of the Florida Retirement System, and they currently, if an employee's eligible, that means they're not retired from FRS, we pay X amount, X percentage, I'm going to use regular class employee, we pay 11.91% to that employee's retirement. They, of course, pay 3%. We do have employees, there's actually eight people that are working with the county, that are not eligible for a Florida Retirement System, and even though they're not eligible for the Florida Retirement System, the state still requires us, for the pension fund, to pay 5.89% in. So there's a little bit of disparity for, between two employees. You have one where they're contributing, the county's contributing 11.91%, and these are last year's rates, and then you have another one where they're contributing 5.89%. So to provide equity to the employees, and those that would, that are not eligible, we would suggest that, what we're proposing, is that a 401A be created, where the difference between the two rates, at no time would it exceed the rate that we're contributing for employee A versus employee B, who's not eligible. So in this case, we're, the employee that's eligible to participate in FRS, they get 11.91% contributed to their retirement plan, not eligible, 5.89% goes to the state, and the employee doesn't benefit at all. So we're suggesting that the 6.2, 6.02% difference would be deposited, you know, for that employee into a 401A. And the reason why we think this is important, because we do have a number of employees, or a number, there's a number of employees that retire from the Florida Retirement System, and it's, it's a pretty diverse organization, not just St. Lucie County, 67 counties, there's several municipal employers, and if they retire, then they could still come back and participate, and they would still receive a supplemental retirement benefit by terms of the difference in deposit in the 401A. So we see that as a recruiting tool in terms of, we're having difficulty recruiting a number of positions, and if you have an employee that retired and said, "You know, I retired at 55 or 60. I still feel like, I'm not done. I can, I can do a couple more years," and now they have an opportunity, and they're only being treated fairly and equitably among their colleagues, you know, that are receiving a benefit from the county.
Well, I can also tell, I want to make this clear, and I don't know if I'll speak, I can speak for you too, but you and I are both a perfect example of that. We retired from the FRS, and we, we have a new job, obviously. I've been a little, a couple years longer than you have, but we don't get anything but, but just a paycheck from the county, where that may be well and good. It doesn't, it's not all about me. I think it's more about having folks that could come in, whether they have, you know, an engineering background, or they're maybe a former police officer that could come in and handle code enforcement cases, stuff like that, or they just want to do something within the county, and they can come back and work. I think it's, the idea's a great recruiting tool. Yes, it would be a benefit to, to myself and former Sheriff Lor, now Commissioner Lor, for that, and, but I do think it's, I think it's a great idea, actually, for an employee. There, there is some employees that, that do, especially in law enforcement and fire rescue services, that do retire at 25 years, when they may be just in their early 50s, or some, something of that nature. And they're, they still want to work and can come back and do something, whether it's being a bad guy at Sand Ridge, you know, or anything for that, for that purpose. There's a few that do that. I think Don Smith does that, actually. He was former captain of the sheriff's office. So it has my blessing, even though, yeah, I guess it would benefit me personally. I just want to make that clear, that that's not the reason about.
Mr. Chair? Counselor, you were good on that, with regards to the fact that it does affect two members up here?
Yeah, so under 112.313 of Florida statutes, it's very clear that no public officer shall be prohibited from voting on a matter affecting his or her salary, expenses, or other compensation as a public officer. So clearly, the Florida Legislature recognized that there are times where there are votes that are going to be happening before this board, that affect compensation for this board and other people, and, and recognized that you had to allow that, that vote to happen. So it's not a voting conflict under the Florida statutes.
Commissioners, any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Since I mentioned you, any comment?
No, I just, for the, for the administrator, could an employee similar to myself and chairman, could we opt out if we wanted to?
Certainly could.
Mr. Chair, I'm far too young to retire. I mean, I, you know, I'm just saying. But with that, I agree with the county administrator's thoughts, and so moved.
Second.
Permission to advertise.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Lor. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion?
I may think differently if, you know, when I get to your age, when I retire.
I hear you. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none. Commissioners, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, next, 12D2, recommendation to transition Health Plan Administrative Services, ASO, from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Florida, Inc., also known as Florida Blue, to Blue Cross Blue Shield National Alliance, effective October 1st, 2023, to September 30th?
2026.
2026, thank you.
Little typo. Colloquial.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to our Human Resources Director, Ms. Boyle. Susan?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much. So as the agenda item states, we have been with Florida Blue since 1996 as our ASO provider. That stands for Administrative Services Only. So we are the health plan. We're self-funded, and then they administer the claims and do all the processing of those claims. They provide a network of, a nationwide network of physicians and medical facilities that our insured members have access to, and that relationship has proven to work really well for our group, because we do have retirees that live throughout the United States, so we have that expanded Florida Blue network. But where we're running into an issue is the Florida Blue Administrative Services Platform that's used. It's a, a legacy system that's been in place for a number of years, and it isn't going to integrate as, as seamlessly as I need it to with our employee clinic and some of the other wellness initiatives that we're trying to move forward with. So the recommendation is to transition under the Florida Blue umbrella, but move to what's called the National Alliance Network. There's no change in providers, no change in the network for our members. They'll have the same access to the same doctors that they have today. What will happen is they will receive a new group number, a new card, a new customer service, and those types of things, a new portal for registering and getting your claims online, and then we'll experience a lot of improved connectivity and improved ability to personalize the page to Indian River County, send out messaging that's related to our group. So we're really quite excited about what this platform's going to allow us to do moving forward from a wellness perspective.
Commissioners, any questions?
Oh, and we save a little money.
Any questions? Your pleasure.
Move approval?
Second.
So you?
I think Commissioner Fleischer got it in first.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lor, second by Commissioner Fleischer, to accept staff's proposal. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Bob's got some comments.
Oh, Bob, you want to say? Okay, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Bob McParland. And I, I apologize, but I see this item, and I know what a great plan that you guys have. And I was looking in the backup material and wondering if Surgery Plus was still a benefit with this Blue program.
Yes, it is, and this program will integrate with Surgery Plus, so we should see some improved direction of our members to utilize that great benefit.
All right, thank you, because I'm actually utilizing that. It was a benefit the state gave us, and it is huge savings for people. So I just, thank you.
Can you work up here? All right, I have a motion, a motion by Commissioner Lor, second by Commissioner Fleischer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Public Works, 12G1, Indian River County Beaches, Sector 4, post hurricane Ian and Nicole. And I see Mr. Cherist is here.
Good morning, Eric Cherist, Natural Resource Manager for Indian River County Public Works. I have a, a little bit of a presentation to go over to support the agenda item with some information. So if we can just flip, some of this may be a little bit of a, a repeat, because it was provided to the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee, as well as some information from a, a presentation provided to some homeowner groups as well. So just bear with me on it. This is going to focus on Sector 4 within Indian River County, and the damages, the hurricane erosional damages that was caused by both Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. It's kind of similar to the presentations we have provided the county commission on Sectors 3 and 5 previously, but this one here is focused strictly on Sector 4. Sector 4 represents about 3.2 miles of shoreline. We show it there from the DEP Range Monuments 55 to 72. Range monuments, just as a, a point of fact, are identified about 1,000-foot increments throughout the coastline. They are reference points from DEP surveys. So you're going to hear me mention Range Monuments as we go through the presentation. During the storm, again, we did see significant amount of erosional damages throughout the county's beaches. Here, we're focusing on the Sector 4, in which we did see an average dune retreat of about 19.2 feet. This is taken from survey data that the county had authorized to be collected after the storm, and compared to pre-storm conditions. What that also shows in this area was a, a loss of about 50,000 cubic yards of sand above the mean high watermark. This loss of sand did, you know, identify beachfront infrastructure that was observed, visually observed, to be in a vulnerable condition after the storm. Some photos of that is the dune walkover structure off of Beach Comer, as well as a property just north of the Beach Comer. County staff did meet with representatives from FEMA, the DEP, and the Army Corps of Engineers immediately after the storms to do some visual assessments, and have been in constant communications with those agencies. with those agencies since then. The county staff was afforded the opportunity to assist the DEP in the issuance of emergency permits for measures that residents, homeowners, would, you know, like to take after the storms. This has now since stopped, based on sea turtle nesting season really prohibiting any kind of, you know, continuation of on-beach measures. But the county did issue numerous permits for residents within Sector 4, as well as within the, the entire stretch of the beaches, for some emergency measures. This house here that you do see did undergo emergency measures. These permit for that house was issued by the DEP, as it did include some, some structural, some items other than just the placement of sand. County staff focused pretty much on the placement of sand. Although there was a significant loss to the system, the surveys did show that the shoreline gained 9.9 feet in Sector 4. Again, it's really tough to understand that for the fact that we did see a significant retreat of the dune. But regardless of the retreat of the dune, the actual beaches grew by about 10 feet. What that kind of shows is a, a volume of sand gained in the system of about 800 cubic yards, which is, is really difficult to swallow, based on the erosion that's observed. But really, what the storm did is it ate into the dune and moved that sand from the dune into the, the beach berm, as well as just the near shore. So sand is still in the system, but it is unlikely that the dune will recover to the conditions we have seen pre-storm without any kind of human intervention. So, you know, sand may still be in the system, but again, not in the, the width of the dune. A couple of items that, that are important as we continue in this presentation is, Sector 4 is not an engineered beach. I just want to kind of clarify that. What that means is we, there has been no engineering design of, of a beach permitting, as well as permitting through the Joint Coastal Permitting Program, as well as major nourishment events that have taken place throughout Sector 4. There have been smaller events and dune-only events, but nothing that would consider that beach as a qualifying event for an engineered beach. In addition, most of Sector 4 is not identified as critically eroded. Again, Sector 4 starts at our Monument 55 and goes to 72. Only the southern 2,100 feet of Sector 4 is currently identified as critically eroded. The critically eroded, as we go further on, is one of the items that is, would make some funding available from the DEP in a critically eroded thing. But again, for Sector 4, the current critically erosion area is only the last 2,100 feet of the project, of Sector 4. That map on the right just goes to show you, the county has about 15.7 miles currently identified as critically eroded. The yellow area is the gap, if, per se, of about, you know, 3.2 miles of the, the Sector 4 project area. The critically eroded is a DEP program, not a county program by any means. There is a long definition here of what a critically eroded shoreline means per the, the program of the DEP. I'm not going to read it word for word, but you can see it, it does say where a, a segment of shoreline where a process or human activity have caused or contributed to erosion and recession of the beach and dune system to such a degree that there are problems. Basically, they issues for the upland development, recreational interests, wildlife habitat, or important cultural resources. Again, that's the DEP program, not the county's. The DEP, in their evaluation of a critically eroded shoreline, they take many factors into account. Obviously, here, we're kind of highlighting some of the, the items where it's a qualitative and a quantitative analysis that is done. When data is limited, the DEP staff do, does rely on their engineering judgment as well. So there is some little bit of room in there. When new data is provided to the department, the department does, you know, incorporate that new data into subsequent analyses. So it's, it's important to know that. For the fact is, Indian River County, the county has on multiple occasions reached out to the DEP and asked them to consider including Sector 4 as part of the critically eroded shoreline within the county. Those requests have been made based on observations that we have and supported by survey data that has been submitted to the state. Just kind of highlighting some of the most recent ones here, you're going to see in February 2018, the response that the county received back was that the shoreline was, was not going to qualify for the critically eroded designation. We had since requested it again in late 2020, and, and in January 2021, we got a report back from the state, or an email back from the state, saying that it still would not qualify. That December 2020 application or request was supported by a very lengthy document prepared by one of the county's consultants to, you know, justify the request. We touched upon just about all of the items you saw on the previous screen, with regards to the habitat, structural loss, and so forth. The response did come back from the DEP that we still did not qualify for Sector 4 being identified as critically eroded. Most recent response was as a result to the hurricane damages that we observed. We did reach out to the department and said, guys, what, what can we provide you this time to do another analysis on Sector 4 to determine if those beaches could be considered as critically eroded? The department, seeing statewide damage, took it upon themselves to pretty much review their entire critically eroded shoreline inventory and, and make assessments to, you know, potentially include additional properties. We did receive a response back in, back in beginning of April, that they were working their way down the coast, and Indian River County would be receiving an evaluation. These evaluations are basically done by modeling efforts in addition to looking at the data. We have since received a preliminary email from the department that, you know, it still would not potentially qualify. Again, it's a preliminary response back from the department at this point, but I don't have anything hard or concrete yet. But at this point here, we, it is looking like the same determination will, will remain, that it is not identified as critically eroded. We have since, you know, requested additional information from the state. Again, it is preliminary, so please acknowledge that it's preliminary at this point. We did provide them photos of the properties. They, they are aware of that. They've seen our damage assessment reports, and we're asking them to, you know, take a closer look at the, the information, so. The critically eroded shoreline would make Sector 4 eligible for applying for cost share funding, but eligibility does not mean guaranteed. I mean, there is still an application process that we would have to go through. It identifies many, many aspects, and then the, the state then reviews the applications, grades them, and ranks them accordingly, and then funding is allocated based on the ranking they provide. It is important to note, though, also, that even if Sector 4 was to be identified as critically eroded and was to apply for, you know, cost share funding through the state, part of the program, part of the, the, the program that the state looks at is they actually take into consideration the public access. And the public access then defines the amount of a cost share funding that would be made available. Sector 4, it only has one public access area at Beach Comer Lane, and based on that public access area, about 2.3% of the project could be eligible for cost share funding with the state. So again, critical erosion is not going to open a, you know, a floodgate of funding at this point, but it would make some of the project available for, for cost share funding, 2.3%. One of the other items that the county's been working on is, is interactions with FEMA. FEMA does get involved on large-scale disasters, as we are aware. We are working with them for losses in Sectors 3, 5, 7, and 4. But again, and FEMA's evaluation, when they look at it, they kind of put the damages in two different categories, based on category G falling for engineered beaches, or category B falling for unimproved natural beaches, but for emergency measures. So that's kind of where we have the two programs here. Category G funding, as I touched upon, is only going to be available for engineered beaches. And Sector 4 is not an engineered beach, as I addressed earlier in the presentation. So at this point here, obviously, there's a definition there of what FEMA identifies as, as engineered beach, but it's important to note that the statement in the bottom, as there are no engineered beaches in there. The statement we did get from an email, a most recent email here, just received on the 8th, still a preliminary email, but it was a determination issued by FEMA that Sector 4 beaches are not engineered, and therefore not eligible for category G funding. Category B funding is the other option for emergency measures. That, you know, category B funding is something that is evaluated based on, you know, an emergency need to do something. Funding would be available, made available for that. Definition here is where, you know, FEMA considers all beaches that are not engineered to be unimproved natural beaches. Replacement on a natural beach is not eligible for public assistance. However, if the natural beach eroded to a point where a five-year storm damage could damage the improved property, FEMA does make funding available for an emergency berm on that beach. Emergency berms are about six cubic yards per linear foot, which is not a very huge amount of sand. But again, any kind of assistance in the, in the Sector 4 were options that the county was trying to pursue. That same day, on that 58 email from FEMA, we had a determination, a preliminary determination, that the Sector 4 dune system would not qualify for any of the category B funding. That determination was made on the, the data that supports the fact that the dune width had decreased by 19.2 feet, as I had mentioned earlier. But yet, the FEMA considers the elevation of the dune as the important protectionary measure. What that means is a, during our surveys, the, you know, obviously from our reference points, we have the elevation of the dune. There is a formula that, that FEMA does require. Basically, it's a, a five-year stillwater elevation and a storm run-up. When you calculate those numbers in there, it then projects what a storm surge could be on a, a five-year storm event, if you would. So if the existing dune is higher than what that calculated storm run-up event would be, then it does not qualify for category B funding. So that's kind of trying to be depicted here in this chart. What this is showing is these blue lines is the elevation of the existing dune. Again, taking out of the equation the width of the dune. This is just the elevation. Based on the data provided by our consultant, following the formulas identified by FEMA, this red line would be what they consider the, the stillwater elevation with a 2% storm run-up. What this means is, you know, we're looking here, we're at about 11, 11.2 feet for that calculated value. Our lowest dune on Sector 4 remains at 12 feet. So based on that information, FEMA has decided that Sector 4 category B funding would not be ineligible option for that. This information was presented to the Beach and Shores on April 17th, minus the updates from that 58 email we have from FEMA. But again, a, a presentation of this was given to that association in advance of, of coming to the board here. This did result in a, a very large audience. A lot of the stakeholders came out, a lot of the property owners came out, and we actually almost filled the chambers here back on April 17th. There was a very lengthy discussion with regarding options that could be done, with the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee actually making a couple of recommendations that are now included with the agenda that was presented and also included in this presentation. So we have a couple of recommendations from that committee. What the recommendations, what the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee had supported and, and were, was looking to bring before the Board of County Commissioners as recommendations from that group, would be that a request that the Board of County Commissioners direct the staff to look at performing a dune-only project within Sector 4. In addition to that, another recommendation that, that the group supported was requesting that the Board of County Commissioners direct staff to look at performing a feasibility study to determine the eligibility for Sector 4 becoming an engineered beach. So those were the two action items that were recommended from the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee. In the agenda, as well as to kind of support those items, staff has put some estimated costs and timeframes for those items. If we were looking at doing the feasibility study and permitting for a dune-only project, which was in, in line with the first recommendation from the Beach and Shores, it is assumed that the permitting and, and timeframe necessary to move forward with that kind of study would be about a permitting cost of anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000, as well as a timeframe of three to six months. So we would assume within a three to six month timeframe, and those costs, we would be able to have a, we're looking at having a, a one-year coastal construction control line permit to allow us to do a dune-only project. The second option, which was to look at the feasibility study, to become an engineered beach and permitting for that, you're talking a much larger cost. There's a lot additional effort that's taken into that. You're talking about a $500,000 to $600,000 estimated cost with a timeframe of up to two years. The efforts that are required to pursue an engineered beach are, it's, it's monumental amount of monitoring that needs to take place, so that the engineering can be performed. And again, it's kind of a, a hand-in-hand effort. But again, what we've seen is it's about a two-year process, too. And these, these numbers here are realistic based on what we have seen from, from, you know, previous construction efforts and, and post-construction monitoring and so forth. If we were to do a dune-only project, the volumes of sand that you see there range from about 88,000 cubic yards up to about 102,000 cubic yards. And again, this is for a dune-only project. The estimated cost from that, from our consultant, ranges from about $5.1 million to about $5.9 million. So that, that is the cost to do a dune-only project, so. Before we can actually move forward with any kind of potential project in, in the Sector 4 area, there are some items I want to bring to your attention as, you know, challenges or obstacles, if you would. One of them is going to be easements. Easements have been discussed at this board on numerous occasions. We're very familiar with the process that gets involved with obtaining easements. As we have not done a project within Sector 4 previously, we have no easements within Sector 4. So we're looking at approximately 64 properties that would require the legal sketch and description, as well as staff to reach out to those properties and obtain an easement, or try to, you know, solicit an easement from those property owners. Beyond the, the issues with the easements, we have the funding issue. As we have a preliminary email determination from FEMA that we are, we will be ineligible to receive either category G or B funding, we are waiting for a formal letter from the department. That's our next step. When we get that formal letter, we, we anticipate issuing a challenge for that. FEMA's program is pretty black and white with regards to how they interpret things. But again, we would look to operate on, on the best interest of the county and issue a challenge to say, please, you know, reconsider type of thing. So again, we, we anticipate doing that after receiving the formal determination from this, from FEMA. We are also continuing to work with the DEP in order to determine any availability of state funding. Back in late December, there was a grant that was issued from the governor's office that issued $100 million statewide for losses from Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. The county is anticipating to be the recipient of about $4 million of that $100 million allocation, with the sectors each identifying different amounts of that funding that can be allocated to the sector. So it is not our determination as to how, really how to spread the money within the sectors. It's anticipated that the DEP grant will identify, and I think the number in your agenda item identified about $1.2 million, I believe, or, sorry, 1.2. Thank you.
Rounding it off here, quite correct.
Thank you. So again, that would be for Sector 4, to be used for projects within Sector 4. Additional obstacles is, as we kind of just touched on earlier, the beach access. There's only one beach access within Sector 4, for that's Beach Comer Lane. So construction may be a challenge, but again, that's just identifying that. Availability of sand. We, we did hear that there was a bottleneck of sand when people tried to do some emergency measures earlier this year. You know, something the size of a dune project within Sector 4 would require a coordination effort with the mines in advance. So that's just a, an item there. There, there is adequate resources, we just need to be able to coordinate in advance. Again, kind of touching upon that, even if Sector 4 is identified as critically eroded, we're still only going to open up a small portion of that fund, a small portion of that project for cost share funding. And again, I think I touched about, that was about 2.3%, and that's based on the public access within Sector 4. Kind of coming full circle, and to summarize this, we're estimating the damages from Hurricanes Ian and Nicole within Sector 4 range from about $5.1 to about $5.9 million. And again, that is for a dune-only project within Sector 4. That's for the volumes of sand for about 88,000 to 102,000 cubic yards of sand. FEMA has determined that Sector 4 is ineligible for category G or B funding, based on it not qualifying for the, either of those. not qualifying for either of those programs. Again, most of Sector 4 is not critically eroded and therefore not eligible for cost share funding. And even if it was eligible for cost share funding, it would be a minimal amount of cost share from the DEP's program. Again, the major hurdle is, as we have not done a project within Sector 4 before, there are no easements. The county does not have any easements for Sector 4. So those 64, approximately 64 properties would need to enter into an easement agreement with the county. Coming to the recommendations part of it, as, as mentioned earlier, the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee did make two recommendations. Those would be for the Board of County Commissioners to direct the staff to, to look at performing a dune-only project in Sector 4. And the second recommendation was for the Board of County Commissioners to direct the staff to look at performing a feasibility study to determine the eligibility for Sector 4 becoming an engineered beach. Again, those costs were presented earlier in the presentation. I can flip back if anyone is interested. Staff recommends that the BCC continue to support our ongoing efforts with FEMA, the Division of Emergency Management, and the DEP for the regulatory permitting, and the regulatory permitting agencies in order to continue to pursue funding sources for any potential future dune repair project addressing the Sector 4 impacts from Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. At this point, staff is requesting direction from the board as to the next steps with regards to Sector 4. Lot of information, kind of in a quick approach. More than happy to answer any kind of questions.
Ms. Chair, I'm sure it's all opened up for questions. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start. Go ahead, sir, for our first.
Eric, in the agenda item in which you presented, you mentioned that the Sector 4 dune restoration is between 5, 5 million, 5.1 to 5.9 million. Can you, I know, you and I had the conversation yesterday regarding the, if you do the, the second recommendation, the feasibility study at $500,000 to $600,000, we don't have a project cost. Can you please explain why we would not have a project cost at this point in time?
Okay. The engineered beach, as he was saying, as, the engineered beach is the $500,000 to $600,000 permitting approach. Again, at that point, it's not going to be technically considered an engineered beach in FEMA's eyes until we do a placement event. Now, the 87 to 102,000 cubic yards is for a dune-only project. I can't give you an extrapolated volume of sand for an engineered beach. An engineered beach would at that point give us a dune, increase the beach berm, as well as place sand out into the ocean, if you would, to, you know, build our beach. I don't know those volumes there until the engineering is actually done on that to determine where our nearshore hard bottom resources are and how much sand can actually be placed in the system. You know, we would know it's going to be, you know, a much greater volume than the 102,000 cubic yards, because now instead of just building a dune, we're actually building a beach into the wave system, if you would. Again, I just can't give you a volume on that, but it would be a considerable difference than what I'm telling you would build a dune system.
Thank you, Eric.
Any questions? I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start off. Beach and Shore study, the start of it. We, we had almost a four-hour meeting. The place was packed with residents. The Beach and Shore folks really examined this project, really thought about it, had some really good recommendations. I'm very proud of, of, of the direction that the Beach and Shores has taken with regards to analyzing project and coming up with, with good recommendations with this. You see the recommendations from, from the Beach and Shores to direct staff to pursue a dune-only project and to direct staff to pursue a feasibility study for an engineered beach, and those paths unanimously by the Beach and, by the Beach and Shore Committee. The couple of questions that I want to ask for Eric is, is I'm gonna, it's gonna be, you know, let's say we got all these minutes tomorrow. We went with either one of those recommendations and to move forward on this project. Can this be done as of November 1st? And could, 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 could we do a dune-only project November 1st and all that stuff? Could we be ready to go by November 1st, '23?
Again, easements aside, and funding aside, I don't want to speak on either one of those two topics.
I'm saying everything's perfect.
You asked me about constructability. Permitting, we anticipate, you know, a three to six-month process for the permitting through the DEP for a one-year coastal construction control line permit. We don't anticipate many hurdles with that. Placement of 87,000 to 102,000 cubic yards of sand is a good-sized volume, but again, something that the state would, you know, probably not blink an eye at with regards to issuing us the permit. You know, theoretically, we, we could be available, you know, ready, I say that, but there's still a bidding process and so forth. We'd actually have to go through many steps. But as far as removing the easements and removing the funding from the equation, constructability, we could theoretically be constructible. It would probably be in the December timeframe, and I say that because even though sea turtle nesting season does end on October 31st, there are nests that are laid in this, you know, later in the season that still have a 60-day incubation timeframe, if you would. So we, we would need to move nests, and that's kind of frowned upon as much. So in order for us to go to construction as early as November, we'd have to move nests starting in August or wait until the last nest in that area has hatched. So it would probably be in the late November, early December timeframe before we could really do a project.
Well, all the stars aligned, we could probably be ready for November 1st.
Again, with the caveats that we spoke of, yes.
Access, access to perform this project with the construction equipment, Beach Comer Lane or...
We would actually have to, you know...
Have we looked at that yet?
No, but I mean, the Beach Comer Lane has been used for numerous, you know, private nourishment events or private repair events. Again, that's something that we would have to reach out to the Town of Indian River Shores and come to an agreement for the use of it for, for a county project, so.
Mr. Harpring, no problem with that?
No problem, sir.
Okay, all right. My next question is, is if, with regards to this, based on the Beach and Shore recommendation, both, both recommendations to do a, to do a project, I mean, I, I've seen this beach. To me, this beach needs work. I mean, to me, it's critically rooted, but I don't work for DEP. I'm not a, I'm not a hydrologist or a geological scientist, but it's just me, okay? That's just me that thinks something needs to be done. I think we've had a lot of input, and we're gonna, I'm gonna open it up for a public comment here in just a minute, but we've had some other information come forward. I don't know if that's the time or the place to talk about it yet. Maybe those people out there would want to talk about it. There are some options here. I think it's worth, I think it's worth moving forward on something, and I'll wait till I hear what y'all have to say and what the public has to say before I give my recommendation with regards to this. But I think we need to move ahead on this project in some form or fashion. I think we still need to have Eric and staff keep talking to the government officials. I think we need to talk to Senators Mayfield, Senator, Senator Grau, Representative Bracket, see what, if, you know, if they can, that, or move the Governor off point to, let's throw some additional money this way. I think those are all options that we need to, that we need to address. And with that, I'll hold the rest of my comments till later, but Commissioner Moss.
Yes, I have a question regarding the FDIP funding, but first of all, I would like to move to approve the Beach and Shores recommendations, and that is to direct staff to look at performing a dune-only project within Sector 4 and direct staff to look at performing a feasibility study to determine eligibility for Sector 4 becoming an engineered beach. And Kim, could you show the two photos, please? I was there in January. The, it's, it's absolutely devastated. I mean, you can see how close it is to, you know, to private property, to homes. I mean, the next, with the next storm, and could you show the other one? The, you know, the, the ocean would literally be in someone's living room, and you, and you, you can see, I mean, it's, the dunes are gone. I mean, they're just, they're gone. It was absolutely devastating. I'm not going to bicker about critically eroded. The point is, we need to fix it. I view this, and, and, and thank you, Kim, that's good. I view this, the dunes, I mean, really, operationally, they're infrastructure. This is infrastructure. I mean, we can't have the ocean endangering private property this way. So I feel that we need to take this very seriously and take action. And, and, and by the way, Johns, Representatives from Johns Island Property Owners Association Board of Directors will be meeting with both Representative Bracket and Senator Grau. I've been working on, on setting that up, so that, that, that will happen. That being said, I also would like to know a little bit more about this FDIP amount for Sector 4. Our, our, our $1,152,520, is there any kind of timeline on that funding? Do you have any expectation?
Well, we have not received the formal grant from the state at this point here. When we do, we will be bringing it for the board for approval and acceptance. But the draft documents did look like, I think it was a July 2025 completion timeframe in order for the, the grant. So it does look like that, you know, they really were looking at, you know, pretty much fast-tracking it. Some of the other grants that we have for the other sectors do have a little bit longer timeframe. That's not saying that we could not ask for an extension on the grant, but again, we anticipate the document, when we receive it, to have a July 2025 timeframe, you're kind of requesting that activities identified in the grant be completed, so.
Thanks.
Ms. Chair?
Commissioner Fleischer.
Well, we have to second the motion if, so if we want to continue to talk or talk to anybody else.
We have a motion from...
I will second that.
Would you have, I'm sorry, I was reading. But we do have a motion from the Commissioner Moss to accept the Beach and Shore's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Fleischer. We're gonna open it up for discussion.
I have questions.
I'm gonna let the public comment on the, on the motion, unless, I'll still let Commissioners comment if you still have questions before we open it up.
Yeah, yeah, and I think Commissioner Adams does, but I have a question for Eric as well.
All right.
Eric, it's, it's gonna cost $500,000, estimated $500,000 to have this deemed as an engineered beach, correct?
Well, it's the $500,000 to $600,000 for the permitting process for that, and then technically in FEMA's eyes, we would need to do a nourishment event before it's technically going to be considered an engineered beach in FEMA's eyes for future storm damages.
So question is, had we been an engineered beach already and for public consumption, can you edify on what, what constitutes an engineered beach? So everybody knows what we're talking about. We had to go to Beach and Shores 101 and 102 along the road, but I want everybody to understand what it means to be an engineered beach.
Okay. Great. An engineered beach, in FEMA's determination of it, is, is a beach that is constructed by the placement of imported sand of proper grain size to a designed elevation, width and slope, and maintained by periodic renourishment. So what that means is there is a, a plan that is approved and permitted that identifies a template, if you would, basically seeing what the existing shoreline looks like and then showing what a permitted template would be, meaning we build out, build out the dune by 20 feet, we increase the beach berm by six feet in elevation, then we drop at a three-to-one slope until we meet the existing grade. Something like that would be a plan, gets permitted through both the Army Corps of Engineers and the DEP under the Joint Coastal Permitting Program, takes into account just about everything. I mean, the, the actual supplemental environmental assessment documents that we have to abide by are about an 800-page document. So there's a lot of engineering that goes into a permitted beach. And, and again, a lot of data is needed in advance of being able to put in our permit application. We need to go out there and do assessments as to what not, above and beyond what the surveys are, the physical surveys, we have to go out and do biological surveys in the area, be nearshore, hard bottom. So when the state goes to issue the permit, they know what, you know, what it can actually be designed as. It is important to note, though, if this was an engineered beach, you know, going into these two hurricanes...
That was the second question.
Yeah. Our survey data did show that the Sector 4 beach did grow. Sand, was more sand in the Sector 4 beach system after the storm than before the storm. Therefore, if that was an engineered beach, you still wouldn't get any funding from FEMA under the Category G. When FEMA looks at sand losses, they're looking at sand losses not just on the dry beach, but to what they would consider the depth of closure into the water, if you would, probably down to an elevation of about minus 12 feet. That sand moves back and forth in the system. And we did see it, you know, immediately after the storms. We went out there, and Commissioner Moss had gone out there with those, those pictures that, you're talking an eight-to-10-foot dune escarpment. After that time, that dune escarpment, not that it has gone down at all, but the beach is built up. So we've seen sand moving back and forth. Again, our stance is that sand moving back and forth is not going to build the width of the dune, but we do see it in the system. When FEMA looks at doing an evaluation to say how much sand was lost and what, how much sand are we going to provide funding for, they take into account the sand that's in the system. So again, even though we saw a 20-foot dune retreat, that 20-foot of dune ended up being a nine-foot of additional beach width plus a nearshore sandbar, if you would. So again, that sand moves in the system. Our stance is, you know, we were looking to request funding to do a dune project, knowing that, that sand will not rebuild the dune in a really rapid format, but...
I, I walk the dunes on the allowable side of the dune frequently. I just don't take pictures of it. I just enjoy it, and it is devastating, devastating. I hate to see what FEMA considers devastating, because this is deep. You could, you know, it's, it's two bodies tall. It's gone. So with that, I just wanted to clarify that had we been an engineered beach, we would not be qualified for any beach restoration based on the calculations that were afforded. We went through this in, I think it was 2008, '09, when we had to go through the grains of sand and the centimeters of each grain. It's very unfortunate that all of these, these elements are in place. I guess it's to be prepared for no more than yes.
But again, I appreciate the fact that you're saying it is FEMA's program, it's not the county's, yes.
Yes, and I, I wanted that clear to the public as well, because, you know, we have to move. And, and, and the dune specifically is infrastructure. It's not, it's not about pleasure. It's not about laying on the beach and getting a suntan or walking the beach with the dog or not dog. It's, it's about infrastructure, the same way as our roadways, our bridges, and everything else. It protects property, it protects what we have. So we need to go forward with dune restoration. Thank you.
And again, what we're seeing here in Indian River County is not unique to Indian River County as far as, you know, the sand moving off of the dry beach into the water column. It's pretty much being seen, you know, statewide, and some of the areas that really, you know, were devastated beyond the dune system here in the county, but some of the areas on the southwest coast of Florida are in the same boat. And, and again, you're looking at sand still being in the system, so therefore not qualifying for some of the, the volumes of losses that they've had initially thought they were going to qualify for. So it's not just a unique issue to Indian River County. Where focus is, is on Indian River County and what we can do. So we've looked at these losses 15 ways to Sunday to identify, you know, the dry beach, the dune, the berm. We looked at different elevations. It's included in the damage assessment report that's included as backup, but you'll see we've got many different numbers in there, trying to figure out, you know, all this information is, is being provided to FEMA, as well as that we anticipate using this document for additional DEP purposes. But our focus was, what can we do to rebuild the dune, knowing that it's not an engineered beach? You know, what can we do to rebuild the dune? And that's, that's what our request and our asks were to FEMA was like, help us rebuild the dune. And again, with the determination that came back on May 8th, saying that we are ineligible for their funding, you know, again, something we look at challenging, but that's the, the program as it is, and it's not the county's.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric, I got a quick question for you. To do a dune-only project, do we have to have an engineered beach?
No.
No. Okay. That's $500,000, $600,000 we would need to spend. The dune project would be more expensive. You wouldn't have to spend, you don't have to get the beach engineered to have a dune project, right?
Correct. I mean, that's our first option from the Beach and Shores. That's the $30,000 to $50,000 permitting. And again, that permit would be good for one year through the, you know, the CCCL program out of Tallahassee. But again, then the placement of sand on that would be, you know, through a design template, if you would. We're not just gonna have a contractor go out there and, and, you know, evenly distribute 100,000 cubic yards of sand, but it would be not an engineered beach. It would not qualify for an engineered beach.
Okay, Commissioners, I'm gonna, before I open it up to the public, any more questions? Staff?
I do.
Go ahead.
Eric, so the funding that we're talking about today is just for feasibility studies and permitting. There's been no discussion about what the total projects that might come out of these feasibility... out of these feasibility studies and permitting would cost.
For the engineered beach, correct. We have no idea until we have a permit to determine what kind of volume can be placed on the Sector 4 beaches.
But what are our projects running around right now?
I mean, we did our Sector 3 project, which was about twice the size, and that, I believe the final value in there was a $22, $23 million price tag.
Okay.
You know, what we're seeing is, sand is expensive right now, and the hauling costs are expensive. Diesel fuel is dropping our prices up. I believe in our estimate from our consultant, that gives us the $5 million. I think we're at about $53 per cubic yard of sand.
Okay. Because I have some concerns, just similar to the conversations we had with a couple of agenda items ago regarding Oslo. If we're having discussions about this, but we don't have actual project costs, are we setting up unreasonable expectations that we might not be able to follow through with? I think that the dune project is probably closer to actually making, becoming reality, but I have a lot of concerns about becoming an engineered beach and the costs associated with that, and the timeframe that we might be able to actually pull that off, setting up an unreasonable expectation of performance that we won't be able to meet. That's one concern. Did you got that?
No. And thank you for that. And now that we've all discussed that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw my second for the motion. I seconded it, so we can discuss it, but now we have to let it lie.
Okay. I appreciate that. The other question I have is, Sector 4 is not part of the beach management plan, correct?
It is.
It is part of-
It is. We have, all the sectors are included.
All the sectors. Okay. So do we, but we have never done a project within this sector?
We have not. There was one that was performed back in 2006, '07 timeframe, I believe, in which, I believe it was the Johns Island Property and His Association did a project, and it was like some kind of memorandum of understanding that the county somehow was a grant applicant, if you would, or something for it, because, you know, these grants are not available to homeowner associations. There was something, again, I don't know all the specifics on that, but there was something that-
We partnered with them to make, we basically partnered with them to make a project happen.
I believe so, yes. But again, that was done back in that, you know, 2006, '07 timeframe, I believe, based on the impacts from the Hurricane Francis and Jean.
Okay. For the dune, I have, promise I only have two more questions. For the dune project, would that require easements?
Yes.
Okay. The same easements that we're trying to get in Sector 7 that we do for any beach project?
Yes. My intent would be yes. The ones that have, you know, been used successfully throughout the county's beach projects, so.
And I know you're going to continue, regardless of what happens today, I'm assuming you're going to continue to talk to all the granting agencies, state and federal, to try to come up with solutions to this. Just for my fellow commissioners' point of information, I know Pinellas County was recently, they were, they were working with FEMA to get a project done. They were not able to get enough of the easements, so they had petitioned FEMA to make an exception, because they were close, kind of like what we do for our own, like we were trying to do with Sector 7. The State Office of FEMA approved it, and then it went up to the Federal Office of FEMA, and they denied that request. So I'm concerned about the easement situation as well, but I do think that the dune project, it will be easier to get that. But I just bring that up, that as we continue to look at FEMA funding or fall back on FEMA funding to make some of these projects happen, FEMA is now to the point where they're requiring those specific amounts of easements as well. DEP is different, but FEMA, I just thought it was interesting that the state approved it, the state office approved it, and then the federal office denied it, so, for what that's worth. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, as I withdrew my second, I have, would like the opportunity to make another motion when we've cleared this one.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions?
Chair, just a couple of questions for Eric. Any of the dollars, the grant dollars from any of the other sectors, could they be used for Sector 4? Could they be moved?
At this point, I'd probably say my answer would be no at this point. The grants that we do have do identify the range monuments they ought to be used within. Again, we have not opened any communications up with, that I'm aware of, with the agencies to say, to ask that. But at this point, the grants that we do have are specifically identified for each area, if you would, so.
Okay. And Sector 4 is the only one for miles on the east coast of, let's say, from Brevard down, that's in this position?
As far as not being an engineered beach or not being critically eroded, we actually, I mean, Sector 6 within the county is not an engineer, is not a critically eroded shoreline. They didn't get the losses that Sector 4 did. It all kind of, you know, based on, you know, impacts from the nearshore hard bottom, and based on, you know, the actual exposure to the wind and wave energy. I know Brevard County did suffer a significant amount of damage. The, Brevard County is doing some kind of major nourishment events to their south stretch of beaches. The volumes, I honestly don't know, but, you know, we are seeing similar damages throughout the state in the coastline. But as far as whether any of those beaches are, you know, not engineered and not critically eroded, I honestly couldn't tell you, so.
Gotcha. So if we do not get the easements in Sector 7, I think by June 2nd or June 3rd, just to be clear, none of those dollars, if that fails in Sector 7, none of those dollars could be used for Sector 4?
That has not been asked. I have not had that conversation with the funding agencies.
We need to ask that.
You know, I mean, that is something we could, at this point, like I said, the intent is to use those for a Sector 7 project. You know, could we come back here in June and say, if Sector 7 is going to be postponed again, could those funds be allocated elsewhere? I mean, if we are directed by the board to request that, you know, from a funding agency, we can have those conversations. I honestly don't know. Some of the funding is legislatively allocated. I don't know if they have that flexibility. I know they have flexibility within the fund, within the grant itself, to move funds around. If we don't use as much for construction, but yet we want to use more of it for post-construction monitoring, I know they've got flexibility within the grant. I don't know what kind of flexibility they have to reallocate funds.
Right. So I think we all agree that Sector 4 needs to be an engineered beach.
The engineered beach is the two-to-three-year approach, and if it wasn't engineered beach, with the damages that were sustained out there right now, we still wouldn't get any funding from FEMA.
Gotcha.
So the dune, the dune-only project is an option on the table now that would hopefully restore losses to the width of the dune to the best ability, as we did see the beaches have grown width-wise. So restoring the dune, you know, would be a protectionary measure. But again, FEMA looks at the height of the dune, not the width of the dune. We're asking them to look at the width, but it kind of fell upon deaf ears for that, so.
Okay. With respect to the 64 easements in Sector 4, in Sector 7, we're only reaching for about 85% of those. So we have to have all 64 in Sector 4?
I mean, our goal would be 100%. You know, as far as, you know, what determines it to be constructible, we would look at it. We'd probably, you know, bank on that same 90%. But again, our goal would be 100% to make a constructible project and, you know, seal up, basically, if you would, the gap between the critically eroded areas, and put as much sand in the system as we could.
Okay. Well, I want to thank the audience for being here, number one, spending their day with us and seeing what we do. But number two, this board has an obligation, regardless of it Sector 4, or it's Felsmer, Sebastian, wherever, we have the responsibility to make a decision today to move forward, and that'll be my hopes after public comment.
Yeah. And if it pleases the board, I'll withdraw my motion and make a new motion to, for a dune-only project.
Second.
For Sector 4.
I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Fleischer, for a dune-only project. As requested by some of my fellow commissioners, we need to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and we'll open it for public comment. Okay, five minutes.
All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, the second by Commissioner Fleischer for a Dune-only project at this time. Anybody wish to comment on the motion, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Mr. Tackenich, Mr. Rheingold, thank you. James Harpring, Town Manager, on behalf of the Town of Indian River Shores, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Town Council as well as our residents. Having heard a lot of the technical items, what I'd like to do is just really try to narrowly focus your concerns and discussions on a couple of items. First, greatly appreciate everything that staff has done, Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee. Everyone's been working really hard on this and paying the appropriate attention to this particular issue. I think this is actually a bifurcated issue because I look at funding versus need. I understand funding's important. We've all managed budgets, whether they're personal, professional, in government, and funding is important. Regardless of the funding piece, I think that the very important thing that we do is focus on the need, and I think what I've heard this morning from the Commission already in the form of the motion and the support is that you do recognize that the need is great and the need is immediate. One of the important things associated with identifying that need is also identifying the will to act upon what things have to happen in order to address that need. In this case, really, the bottom line is the will of the Commission to determine that this particular area of the county represents a substantial and, I would say disproportionately large amount of the ad valorem revenue that comes into the county to help it operate, and they're just asking for your help in this regard, notwithstanding what FEMA does. FEMA's a hard no right now. We appreciate the movement on staff for reconsideration. DEP is a soft no right now, but we expect that DEP will likely say it's not going to be critically eroded. I think we're a little too hung up on that designation, and I appreciate that that has a funding impact and permitting impact and a lot of other impacts. And while the 2.3% might seem de minimis to some, it really is, and it's a significant amount that could be allocated. Still, I think the Commission has to recognize that the county taxpayers that live in Sector Four, and I believe I've heard that today resoundingly, they do recognize that this has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed in as timely a fashion as possible. I want to mention one thing, though, about the easements. I don't necessarily see this item as a parade of horrible or an obstacle. I look at this entire issue that has been brought to the fore as a result of, really, Hurricane Nicole here locally as an opportunity, an opportunity to look long-term, not just in the short-term need for the Dune project, which is critical and which we support 100%, and which the town will assist the County Attorney's Office and staff in any way that you need to secure those easements, because I've had three times the number of 64 people in my office asking about this than the easements that you need. So we'll help you there. But I think it is, again, critical to look at both that short-term and the longer-term piece, because this is not something that's going to go away, and I think these same arguments will be equally applicable and equally important, whether or not there's an environmentally caused issue, North County, South County, West, East, the middle, the lagoon, whatever it happens to be. They're all very, very critical pieces, and we continue to support, the town continues to support, and the Council continues to support your mission to assist the county taxpayers in trying to address this issue. Certainly, as to any access, I've already advised staff that the town-controlled access of Beach Comer Lane will be made available to you. I know that there are a number of other private access points, and again, the town is very willing to help in any communication at all that you need. So with that, I would just like to really conclude by saying that we appreciate the Town Council, the town, our residents, Sector Four residents, who again are all Indian River County residents and taxpayers. We very much appreciate the recognition of the importance of this Sector Four issue and the Chair's leadership and the Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee's leadership on this issue. We think that both in the short term, it's going to make a big difference, and then in the longer term, I think it'll spur those discussions that have to have to recognize that this is going to be an ongoing issue and what can we do to address it to the extent that we're able. With that, I'll conclude. I'm happy to offer answers to any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I'll take my leave and yield my time at the podium. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Fisher. I live in Indian River Shores. We thank you for your service, you're a dedicated group of people. You've seen that. You've demonstrated that today. What we'd like to offer to you is our community was really struck by the damage to the dunes like we've not been before. We've been through storms 2004 and 2005. But the dunes provide a first line of defense for a lot of infrastructure that sits right behind it. In a couple of cases along the Sector Four shoreline, we've got about 12, 15 feet before you start hitting the foundation of a building that houses about 38 families. So we've got a serious matter on our hands, and Eric did a very good job of describing why this is a county issue. It just has to do with the vagaries of critically eroded beach or engineered beach and all those things we can deal with down the road. But this really falls on the county at this point to act, and that's what our plea is to you, that you will support us. We will work like crazy with the town to get the easements, and I think we've got a team that can make that happen. So we would ask for your favorable consideration of the motion. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Harry Dixon. My wife, Jules, and I, who's in the audience, live at 636 Ocean Road. We've been here since 2017. I want to thank you for your service, and I want to thank you for your time. It's a privilege and a joy to be a resident of Florida, and it's a privilege and a joy to be a resident of Indian River County. I absolutely love it here. I walk the beach several days a week with my dogs. I often run into many friends and new relationship that I have with other folks that don't live in Sector Four. They just become friends because they walk the beach, and I really enjoy their company. It's wonderful to get to know them. The beach in Sector Four is an amazing amenity for the entire community. It's one of the prettiest beaches in the state of Florida. There are two motions before us today. The first motion to restore the dunes. It's absolutely clear that you can't have a healthy beach without strong dunes. You guys described it. It's infrastructure. It's like road bridges and highways. We must do it. I'm new to this process. I've never been to a meeting before. I'm kind of confused as to how 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7 received tens of millions of dollars, and Sector Four hasn't. I don't know the answer to that. I would like to ask a question. I'm sure I'll get an answer later, and what has the county spent on 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 over the past 20 years? So just when I'm sitting here, I looked at ChatGPT, and I said, are dunes crucial? A dune's important to beaches. ChatGPT said, it's crucial. You can't have one without the other. It's silly to talk about a beach without a dune. A dune, you can't have a healthy beach without a dune. So we must approve motion one. Regarding the second motion, I think it's strategically imperative that we pursue classification as an engineered beach. We must execute our role as stewards of this precious asset. The future generations are counting on us to protect it. It's our duty to pursue this status to position ourselves for the next 50 years. That's our obligation. We need to think strategically about being an engineered beach. We can do both at the same time. We must put ourselves in a position to get federal and state funding if it's ever available in the years ahead. That's our responsibility. Finally, the economic impacts of these two motions passing are clear-cut. The beaches are the county's strongest selling point. Tax rolls have grown dramatically. The beach and dune health is worth tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue. These revenues drive the creation of additional services. You guys build them, and we, as residents, consume them. It allows us to age more gracefully. We live longer. We spend more time here. We spend money here. We fill up the restaurants and the hotels and the shops, and it's a flywheel economic effect on the community. So this creates a vibrant economic ecosystem. This is an investment, in my mind, that must be done. I would argue that the return on investment of approving both motions is better than anything else in the budget. So I think we can fix this. I think we can solve it. I think you can fix it. I think you can solve it. Please accept the recommendations of the subcommittee and support the voters that are here today and approve both motions. So again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your great service.
Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, seeing none. Before we move on to the vote, I want to do a couple of housekeeping things here and make sure we're clear on some stuff. I think everybody understands out there, this is all based on this whole, to do this, and I think we're all for doing it, for doing something, for sure. It's all based on the funding, and it's all based on the availability to get easements. I've been very encouraged by hearing Mr. Harpring and Mr. Fisher say that they will do everything they can to get the easements, and I want to make sure that Commissioners, that you're clear. It's my understanding that the easement that we will use is the same easement we revised from the previous easement that we used for the Sector Seven easements. That, to me, that easement we used, that we tried for Sector Seven, was more concise, more clear, and it was a shorter version of the original easement. So I don't know, do we need a motion on that, Counselor, or is the consensus good?
I'm fine with the consensus, but I do want to make a legal statement about that just to make sure it's clear to the folks in the audience, because they could be very helpful with regards to that issue.
Okay, so you all understand what I'm saying? We want to use the current easement that we have. Believe me, I've dealt with it a lot, so trust me on this, I'll tell you, is to go from there. And the second is, the motion is currently for a Dune project only, and that could be up towards $6 million, and I'll ask the county administrator regards to funding.
I'd like to follow up, and I think it was Mr. Fisher that sent the email where they were requesting specifically the county contribute $3 million to fund a Dune-only project, and then fast forward where, and I think he was referring to the community being, through a public-private partnership, are providing the easements and the balance of funding required to complete what is estimated to be a $5 million project. So if we have 1.15, and then you arguably take, you know, the 500 or 600, and it's easy to say arguably take, because it's not like it's cash right there, but we combine that, you're looking at 1.6, we're still at a shortfall. So does that offer still stand, where the county would need to work with the community to enter into that public-private partnership for the balance of the funding?
Mr. Fisher?
He said it certainly could.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to negotiate right here. I mean, Dave Fisher is one person on the infrastructure committee.
Come on up to the mic.
What we'd like is for you to put an offer on the table, what you will do, so we can respond to it.
Okay, fair enough.
So in absent that, I would really need to...
Excuse me for interrupting you, but let me just sort of give you some history here. For back in 2020, the county put $3 million, $6 million in total into 3 and 5. So that's, and you divide that by two, you come up $3 million. So $3 million was the thought would be the kind of number that Section Four would look for, just in a sense of equity and fairness. So that's how we got to the $3 million. The ultimate cost of the project will determine, you know, how we go forward. It is a way, though, as a public-private partnership, is a way to do it, because it's a county issue, no state, no federal. So our willingness to work with you to get this, get it funded, is on the table, but we're not going to respond to numbers until, just like the lady earlier, until we know what the number is.
Understand completely. And so with that, I would like the opportunity for staff, myself, Kristin, to meet and discuss potential funding strategy, financing strategy, to see where we are in terms of the finances and how we could do this. And then we would, you know, at the same time, I think it'd be wise to probably authorize the Dune restoration for the $30,000 to $50,000, so we can move that process along to understand the costs and get that permitting process underway.
Just for clarification, the way I envision this happening is we're going to take a vote on doing the feasibility study and permitting for a Dune project. That will give us what that project will look like and what the cost of that project would be. And then it will come back to us for us to approve some type of funding mechanism or moving forward with the project or whatnot, just like a multi-pronged process. This is just that step. So I don't even think, like, funding for the entire project is necessarily part of this discussion. That would be once we figured out what the project even looks like.
Right, that's what...
Right, and with the folks up there willing to talk about their part once we have that information.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor?
No.
Commissioner Fleischer.
And the timing is more realistic and sincere.
Microphone.
The timing is...
More realistic and sincere, and I think accurate is the better term, because we have, still have the turtles, we still have storms, and at that time, we'll be ready to rock and roll. By the time we have everything all calculated and the permit intact, we'll be able to make this happen. We all want the dunes to be restored yesterday, but they'll be done far nearer, but with the other considerations taken into play as well. So we can look at, we're looking at November, and we have that narrow window.
Anybody else? Counselor?
I just, I want to make an important point about the easement issue, but I want to make sure that the discussion amongst the Commissioners is concluded before I do that.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I just want to remind, again, as I mentioned earlier, if any of those dollars in Section Seven are transferable, that would certainly help out a lot. So that would give us time while the study is going on.
I was going to add to that part of it, that's something we need to do, because our next meeting is June 6th. We'll know by then whether we met the deadline or not on that 30-day easement window that was given for Sector Seven. And I'll ask the county administrator, do you want us to, I'll be glad to do it, be glad to do it, it sounds like, of requesting staff to ask for that funding, should that not materialize?
I could ask ahead of time.
One of us will bring it back.
Well, we'll research that issue.
Okay, all right. Okay, good. Okay, with that, Commissioners, I have a motion by Mr., I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to be, I heard a wonderful generous offer from the folks who spoke. We're going to help you get easements, which is great. John's Island, as I understand it, represents about 2/3 of the Sector Four areas, so we're going to need some help, maybe utilizing Town Hall or other facilities to have meetings with the other property owners along the beach. The issue I want to raise publicly is that if we use the Sector Seven easement, it provides for the county to be able to use a project on the property and for us to be able to utilize the property for sea turtle monitoring. It does not contain any of the customary use of the beach language that's contained in the Sector Three or Sector Five easements. I only raise that because if we don't have the easement that discusses the issue, and this is a Dune-only project, arguably under the statute, we don't have statutory rights to protect the folks, the public, to utilize any portion of the beach upland of the mean high water line. And so if somebody puts up a barrier in J.I. or anywhere else in Sector Four that cuts off the public's use of any portion of the sand above the mean high water line, under the new statutory regime of declaring customer use, it could be very hard for the county to make sure that the public has access to that part of the beach. And I just want to make sure you all hear that loud and clear. And so when I hear things like the third speaker who said, hey, I go walk the beach and I enjoy it, someday someone could put up a fence on that beach and say, I'm sorry, you are not allowed to trespass on my property. And with the way, and I just want the public to be aware of that.
Thank you. All right, any further questions? Okay, with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Fleischer to do a Dune-only project feasibility study, and is that the way the motion was to do? With that, well, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll get to work on it right away. I'm sure Eric's already running to his office to do that. All right, moving on to 13A. That's the county attorney annual employment agreement. Counselor?
Thank you very much. My contract expires on July 1st. I'll just give it a moment. My contract expires on July 1st. It's that time of year again where I bring my contract back to the board for consideration. The only thing I've changed in the proposed contract is the increase in annual salary to reflect my current salary. With that, county attorney's office recommends that the board consider the proposed contract. And with that, I turn it over to the Chair.
Commissioners, any questions of our county attorney?
No, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to give my two cents about Dylan Rheingold. I haven't met a finer gentleman than Dylan, both professionally and privately, and I can't think of a better person to fill this slot, so I just wanted to put it on record how much I appreciate his advice and everything he's meant for the clerk's office and me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McParland?
Yes, sir. Again, I would like to echo what...
Yes, sir. Again, I would like to echo what Commissioner Moss had said earlier about Dylan coming to the CSAC meetings, and he's been, I can't even say how much of a benefit, and echo also the clerk. I mean, he's been awful helpful. I mean, it's about probably, how many years are you here now, Dylan?
I'll be, yeah, be finishing up my 10th year on June 30th.
Right, 10 years. So I've had a lot of interactions with Dylan over the years, not as much as you have had. And like last night, when I saw him, I didn't realize he was on a year-to-year contract. And also, it was shocking to me to see if you let him go without cause, that there was no severance. So the other thing, you know, I told him I was going to come here and speak, you know, maybe give him a little bit of severance if you just let him go. But he is a hard worker. He has always given good information and answered any question that I ever asked of him. He is a gem. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good job, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, 13B, environmental lands acquisition panel appointments.
Chair, I struggle with that, too. We have had a couple, we have a couple open positions on, I'll just say ELAP, because I would struggle with that as well. I will note that I presented several names in my memo, one of which, at the time I was preparing my item, Commissioner Moss was preparing her item. So we've covered one of those applicants, but we still do have three other applicants who are listed on my memo who are still willing to serve on ELAP. County Attorney's Office simply recommends the board consider the applications and decide whether to appoint any of the applicants to fill any of the specific vacant positions. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Mr. Chair, we have to point these people to specific roles. So with, correct, Dylan, they need to be identified?
Yeah, that is correct.
So with that, I would be happy to make a motion that Heather Stapleton fills in the natural resource position, one of the two natural resource positions, that John Orcot would fill the real estate slash finance position, and that Roland DeBois would fill the planning slash engineering position, which would lead one open natural resource position. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Moss. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none. Before I, to the motion, have you made your appointment yet?
No, I still have to make mine, which should be on the, well, I don't, it's really informational, so I just have to get the name to Dylan.
Okay. All right, with that, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor placing Heather Stapleton, Roland DeBois, and John Orcot in their appropriate positions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
So Dylan, just to follow up, obviously, I have to make my appointment, but we still need one more natural resource person, and we don't have any other applications. So if anybody is willing to serve in that role, or anybody that we know, send in an application.
Yep. And I think at this point, once you put a name in Commissioner Adams, I think we'll have eight of the nine positions filled. I think staff is certainly able to start moving forward.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Aliski's been waiting for this all day. Solid Waste Disposal District, 15B1, approval of Solid Waste Disposal District, meeting minutes of March 7, 2023. Move approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. 15B2, 21st Amendment to Republic Services for Side Slope Collector System Expansion and Management and 2023 Hurricane Response.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. I have one question. What is a side slope collector system, sir?
Oh.
I just want to know. It's just, curiosity's been killing me. It's probably something I've seen, and I didn't know it was called that. So what is it?
Little PowerPoint.
Good afternoon, Commissioners in the monitoring at the Solid Waste Disposal District. So side slope collectors basically go on the side slope of the landfill. And what they're doing, they're landfill gas collection system. So they're perforated pipes that we put along the slope of it. And they've been very instrumental, if you will, in collecting more gas. Because as you fill more waste, what we have is an active cell 2 going against the slope of cell 1. And so as more fresh waste is being filled, we already have the wells there. And we're able to capture the landfill gas a lot quicker than we would if we're waiting for the waste to fill up and we put vertical straws in, if you will. So the side slope collectors allow us to capture gas a lot quicker. And it's, I think our flow rate this morning was over 1,300 SEFM. About a year, year and a half ago, we were at like 400 SEFM. So more that we put in allows us to capture more gas. It's good, high-quality gas. And again, we have this renewable natural gas project that we're working on, I think, June of next year. So once that goes online, we'll be able to monetize this gas that we're collecting.
Well, thank you. Now, don't any of y'all say you knew what a side collector was? That explanation. So aren't you glad I asked? Only one that would possibly know would be the landfill queen. So aren't y'all glad I asked? All right, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. All right, 15B3, final pay to GeoSynTech for Work Order 17, Segment 3, Cell 1, Top of Waste Grades and Evaluations. Motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the public wish to comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, commissioners, great job. Long day. Commissioner Fleischer, we missed it by 45 minutes on our estimate. So, but we're, we did pretty good. With that, we'll adjourn and meet back on June 6, 2023.